I just want to say thank you. I know that you guys have done so much when it comes to pride and I know you're helping a lot with the corridor, so definitely want to recognize the work that you've done and also LGBTQ plus history month. So I know there's a presentation, so please take it over.
Thank you. My name is Alyssa Martinez and I'm the VP of Administration of Long Beach Pride. I'm here with our board. This is a shadow box that we make them for our boardroom and we thought maybe you could use a little color. And here we are. It represents our 2024 festival and we wanted to present it to the board. I do have a message from the President of Pride, Tanya Martin, who is very sorry she was not able to come today due to unforeseen circumstances. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, as well as our wonderful City Manager, it is with great pleasure that we are here tonight to thank you for your support and management of the 2024 Long Beach Pride Parade. Without your assistance, things would have been a lot different this year. As you know, COVID hit our volunteering organization very hard and after 41 years, we had doubts about the production of the event. But you came together to support us and we truly are grateful. So much so that the 2025 theme for Long Beach Pride is the power of community. It was this power that placed Long Beach Pride in a better position as well as the many volunteers that stepped up to assist us and the caring sponsors like the Port of Long Beach. As you may know, October serves as LGBTQ plus history month. It was your giving that inspired our organization to create the Long Beach Pride LGBTQ plus history month award. For the first time in the history of our city, in the history of our city and many cities throughout California and the country, you have stepped up to prove your heartfelt diversity and proved your inclusion. With this, I would like to present to you the Long Beach Pride LGBTQ plus history month award to the Mayor of the City of Long Beach and the City Council. Congratulations and thank you so much for all the help this year.
Well, what an incredible award that is. Thank you. You said you have one of those in your office?
I haven't made it yet.
You haven't made it yet, so we get the first one. Well, congratulations to all of you. Pride went very well. It was a partnership this year. It went really well. This is a tradition that really just shows that Long Beach represents a community where everyone belongs. You know, no matter where you come from, how you pray, who you love, that's who Long Beach is and we'll continue to support Long Beach Pride. We're going to come down and invite the City Council down for a photo and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you very much, Long Beach Pride, for coming out. You know, as a councilwoman who represents the Broadway corridor, I understand and recognize how essential it is to preserve and honor the rich history of our LGBTQ plus community. So thank you so much for being out and we have a video. Can we get that queued up, please? Well, thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you for sharing that and say we wish President Tanya Martin a speedy recovery. Thank you for coming out.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. So I just want to say thank you.
I know that you guys have done so much when it comes to pride and I know you're helping a lot with the corridor, so definitely want to recognize the work that you've done and also LGBTQ plus history month. So I know there's a presentation, so please take it over.
Thank you. My name is Alyssa Martinez and I'm the VP of Administration of Long Beach Pride. I'm here with our board. This is a, and this would be silent, right? This is a shadow box that we make them for our boardroom and we thought maybe you could use a little color. And here we are. It represents our 2024 festival and we wanted to present it to the board. I do have a message from the President of Pride, Tanya Martin, who is very sorry she was not able to come today due to unforeseen circumstances. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, as well as our wonderful City Manager, it is with great pleasure that we are here tonight to thank you for your support and management of the 2024 Long Beach Pride Parade. Without your assistance, things would have been a lot different this year. As you know, COVID hit our volunteering organization very hard and after 41 years, we had doubts about the production of the event. But you came together to support us and we truly are grateful. So much so that the 2025 theme for Long Beach Pride is the power of community. It was this power that placed Long Beach Pride in a better position as well as the many volunteers that stepped up to assist us and the caring sponsors like the Port of Long Beach. As you may know, October serves as LGBTQ plus history month. It was your giving that inspired our organization to create the Long Beach Pride LGBTQ plus history month award. For the first time in the history of our city, in the history of our city and many cities throughout California and the country, you have stepped up to prove your heartfelt diversity and proved your inclusion. With this, I would like to present to you the Long Beach Pride LGBTQ plus history month award to the Mayor of the City of Long Beach and the City Council. Congratulations and thank you so much for all the help this year.
Well, what an incredible award that is. Thank you. You said you have one of those in your office?
I haven't made it yet.
You haven't made it yet, so we get the first one. Well, congratulations to all of you. Pride went very well. It was a partnership this year. It went really well. This is a tradition that really just shows that Long Beach represents a community where everyone belongs. You know, no matter where you come from, how you pray, who you love, that's who Long Beach is and we'll continue to support Long Beach Pride. We're going to come down and invite the City Council down for a photo and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you very much, Long Beach Pride, for coming out. You know, as a councilwoman who represents the Broadway corridor, I understand and recognize how essential it is to preserve and honor the rich history of our LGBTQ plus community. So thank you so much for being out and we have a video. Can we get that queued up, please?
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. So I just want to say thank you.
I know that you guys have done so much when it comes to pride and I know you're helping a lot with the corridor, so definitely want to recognize the work that you've done and also LGBTQ plus history month. So I know there's a presentation, so please take it over.
Thank you. My name is Alyssa Martinez and I'm the VP of Administration of Long Beach Pride. I'm here with our board. This is a, and this would be silent, right? This is a shadow box that we make them for our boardroom and we thought maybe you could use a little color. And here we are. It represents our 2024 festival and we wanted to present it to the board. I do have a message from the President of Pride, Tanya Martin, who is very sorry she was not able to come today due to unforeseen circumstances. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, as well as our wonderful City Manager, it is with great pleasure that we are here tonight to thank you for your support and management of the 2024 Long Beach Pride Parade. Without your assistance, things would have been a lot different this year. As you know, COVID hit our volunteering organization very hard and after 41 years, we had doubts about the production of the event. But you came together to support us and we truly are grateful. So much so that the 2025 theme for Long Beach Pride is the power of community. It was this power that placed Long Beach Pride in a better position as well as the many volunteers that stepped up to assist us and the caring sponsors like the Port of Long Beach. As you may know, October serves as LGBTQ plus history month. It was your giving that inspired our organization to create the Long Beach Pride LGBTQ plus history month award. For the first time in the history of our city, in the history of our city and many cities throughout California and the country, you have stepped up to prove your heartfelt diversity and proved your inclusion. With this, I would like to present to you the Long Beach Pride LGBTQ plus history month award to the Mayor of the City of Long Beach and the City Council. Congratulations and thank you so much for all the help this year.
Well, what an incredible award that is. Thank you. You said you have one of those in your office?
I haven't made it yet.
You haven't made it yet, so we get the first one. Well, congratulations to all of you. Pride went very well. It was a partnership this year. It went really well. This is a tradition that really just shows that Long Beach represents a community where everyone belongs. You know, no matter where you come from, how you pray, who you love, that's who Long Beach is and we'll continue to support Long Beach Pride. We're going to come down and invite the City Council down for a photo and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you very much, Long Beach Pride, for coming out. You know, as a councilwoman who represents the Broadway corridor, I understand and recognize how essential it is to preserve and honor the rich history of our LGBTQ plus community. So thank you so much for being out and we have a video. Can we get that queued up, please? Well, thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you for sharing that and say we wish President Tanya Martin a speedy recovery. Thank you for coming out.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the next presentation, recognizing Bruce Double D McCray on his retirement and we're going to pass it on to Councilmember Darryl Suprenaw to provide introductory remarks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And this is a very, very special moment for me and for our 4th district. And I actually thought it might be too big a moment for one 4th district council member, so I called in reinforcements. And tonight we have former CD4 Councilman Dell Roosevelt. Dell, thanks for being here today. So Bruce is actually larger than the 4th district. I think he's been known as Mr. Long Beach for a long time, but he has so much respect and he exudes just what we stand for in the 4th district and he is the original go-forth guy. In fact, I always wondered about redistricting because Bruce has lived in the 4th district for 40 years, but through redistricting, I'm sure he didn't have anything to do with that. But we annexed his UPS cargo jets at Lakewood and Spring into the 4th and then he got all of Cal State Long Beach. And if you don't know anything about Bruce, he's a number one booster and donor at the university. So I don't know how you did it, Bruce, but we thank you for that. Also, we have a number of folks here who are in attendance. Out of respect for Bruce, I see all the police and fire here and the command staff. And we have Chief Heebish who would like to say a few words. And also, if you know Bruce, we're going to leave plenty of time for Bruce to speak. That's what he does best.
Let's get that mic on.
Is it on? No? Yeah, me. Thank you, Councilmember Suprenaw. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'll be brief, but I do want to share that, as you all know, Bruce McCray is an icon of Long Beach. He is a fixture in our city. He is also a good friend and a good person. And on behalf of the Police Department, I know that I can tell you how much we appreciate you. He's a phone call away if we need him for an event, if we need his support, whether it's through UPS or just as a resident of our city. He has been involved with the Long Beach Police Department, our Police Officers Association in the city of Long Beach for as long as I've been here, which is over 30 years, committed to the betterment and the improvement of the city for everyone. So Bruce is someone who understands the differences and the variations in our faiths, in the diversity that makes up our city, and I'm extremely proud to have this opportunity to thank him and congratulate him on behalf of the Police Department on his well-earned retirement. Thank you, Bruce.
All right. Okay, well, Bruce, the podium is yours. We have a plaque here signed by every member of council and the mayor. But I want to give you the mic. That's what you do best.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, it's an honor. And I turn around, it's all about Long Beach. That's why we're here. There's no other city like Long Beach. That's why we're here. For my police and fire, I always tell them, the reason I live here is because I feel the safest. Police has helped me out. The fire, they've saved my life, my mom's life, my dad's life numerous times. We're blessed. And when you look around the dais here, we're blessed. We have everybody. We may be dysfunctional sometimes, but you know something? We all come together. Why? It's Long Beach. I spent a little bit with LA, their Office of Emergency Services and their Olympic group today. They're okay. I mean, I'll say it. I know it's being taped. You're okay. But you know something? Under the leadership we have here, we've got great things coming. Merle Haggard always said, "The good times ain't over for good," and we've got good things coming to Long Beach. So I'm honored that my councilman would do this. And again, Dell Roosevelt, who's my neighbor, and I remember him walking around with a police scanner and every time a police scanner would go out, he'd get in his car and go drive away. And I'm like, wow, that's loyalty to what you're doing. You must not have a job. But 45 years at UPS. I started as an unloader. I tied half of what I make to Long Beach State. Why? I believe in Long Beach State. And when the President got up and gave me kudos and award, they put B McCray up there and she didn't realize that. I graduated from Milliken High School in '77. My twin brother went on to college and got his double masters at Long Beach State. B McCray. Wrong B McCray. And that's what I told her. Hey, I work at UPS. That's where you're getting my money. But God bless you all. God bless you all for what you do for our great city. And God bless everybody in this room for what you do for our great city because it's really about us. It's all about us. Don't ever give up hope because we are Long Beach. So thank you, everybody.
That's right. Congratulations. Well, Bruce, there's some councilmembers want to offer some comments. Before we do, just want to congratulate you on your retirement. And when I think of you and what you've done, never been an elected official. You couldn't tell because you've done more for the community, for our youth sports, for our students at Long Beach State, for our Police Department than any resident of our city. And I think that, you know, it reminds me of, you know, the King quote and drum major for justice that, you know, anybody can be great because anybody can serve. And you demonstrate that, that you spend your time and your effort lifting up other people and lifting up our community and for that, congratulations. We have a number of councilmembers who want to offer their congrats. Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes, Bruce Double D, I just love you. You are Mr. Long Beach. You know, you have been a mentor of mine from early on, you know, in my business here in Long Beach. You've been instrumental with a lot of my personal endeavors and success. You're an amazing teamster. You're a wonderful husband to Barbie. You're a wonderful father and you just have such a great spirit and we're so blessed to have you here in Long Beach.
No, I got boots on this time. I got boots on.
Well, Bruce is well-known for his socks.
Yep.
Very colorful, very different. And sort of missing today, but congratulations on your retirement. Well-deserved. 45 years, man, that is a lifetime. Two lifetimes.
Two lifetimes.
Three are mine, but we're not counting that. Congratulations to you. Take care, enjoy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have councilmembers in Dehos.
Thank you. Hi, Bruce, so great to see you. I love being in the same space as you. Your joy and your love for the city of Long Beach is always so infectious. And I love being around you. But really, what I want to say is what a great impact you have had, not only on the residents of Long Beach, but on our youth. That's where I love seeing you the most. How you speak to our youth, how you motivate them, how you show them by example that they can be whatever they want to be and that they can have a giving, generous heart and that they can be proud of the city that they live in by contributing to the betterment of the city. And that's something that you embody. And I'm just so excited for you and your retirement so that you could devote more time to the city. More?
For free.
For free. We'll be calling on you, Bruce. But no, I just want to say congratulations to you, to your family that will get to enjoy you a little bit more. And just thank you for all that you do for a wonderful city. And thank you for being the amazing icon that you are in the city of Long Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kerr?
Yes. I won't say much.
Okay, thank you.
You and I go way, way, way back.
Way back.
Back when you were driving a truck in a brown uniform. At a really pivotal time in my life and my family's life. So, divine intervention, I always say. So, I am grateful for your friendship. I appreciate the way you have faith in us amongst the dysfunction, amongst the challenges that we have. Thank you for being a model of how to build relationship when it's hard, when you don't agree, when you love them but you're super frustrated with them. Thank you for modeling that for all of us and for me. And I look forward to the continued impact that you will have on the city in new and wonderful ways. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Well, congratulations. If you'll join us, we'll come down and take a photo with your plaque.
I'm going to get a selfie with you guys right there. No one will believe this. Really, no one will believe this, yeah. I got to add one more thing. The love of my life, Barbie, she has been a rock star. We don't agree on everything. Trust me, we don't agree on everything. But thank you for being my stone of keeping me afloat, believe it or not. So, it's kind of an odd analogy, huh? My stone keeping me afloat. I love you.
All right. So next, we have Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes, thank you. You know, as a breast cancer survivor myself, this is a very important topic to me. And I appreciate Memorial Care for their support and work on this issue. Tonight, we have Dr. C. And she'll be joining us for a very special presentation. But let me first introduce her. Dr. C is a board-certified radiologist and medical director of breast imaging at the Memorial Care Breast Center and Long Beach Medical Center. Dr. C received her medical degree from Kex School of Medicine, University of Southern California, and her residency in radiology at the David Geffen School of Medicine, University of California, Los Angeles. Dr. C chose to pursue her fellowship in women's imaging at UCLA, training in both breast imaging and ultrasound, including the 2D and 3D tomosynthesis, mammography, breast sonography, breast MRI, and all image breast procedures. Boy, that was a mouthful. Most recently, Dr. C presented an abstract on ductal carcinoma at the Radiologic Society of North America Annual Meeting. In addition, Dr. C was recognized as a top Los Angeles doctor by the Los Angeles Business Journal in 2022. So, Dr. C.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to Mayor Richardson and the council for having me. And thank you specifically to Vice Mayor Allen for spearheading this recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm so happy to see all of the pink on the dais and in the crowd. This is my favorite month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, because we get to officially highlight how important screening mammography is. Breast cancer affects all of us. We all know someone, we have a loved one or know someone who's had breast cancer or who is affected by breast cancer. It accounts for 11.6% of all new cancer cases annually. And it is the most common cancer in the world. About 30% of all newly diagnosed cancers in women each year are breast cancer. And it is the leading cause of death, of cancer deaths in women. One in eight of us will get an invasive type of breast cancer through the course of our lives. And currently, there are more than 4 million women with a history of breast cancer in the U.S. So, it's a huge issue in our country and worldwide. And it's something that, like I said, it affects all of us. Some other facts are, a woman's risk nearly doubles if she has a first-degree relative who's been diagnosed with breast cancer. This is in contrast to the fact that most women who are diagnosed with breast cancer have no family history of breast cancer. So, the way that works is the breast cancer genes, BRCA1 and 2, their mutations are relatively rare in our society. So, if you have that gene, you are at significantly increased risk of having breast cancer. But the great majority, 90% of breast cancers that are diagnosed in the country are in women who have zero family history, zero risk factors. So, the idea that only high-risk women should get screening is a fallacy. Only 5% to 10% of breast cancers are linked to that gene mutation. All of us have the breast cancer 1 and 2 gene in us. It's the mutation that makes us at increased incidence for breast cancer, men and women. Breast cancer is the leading cause of cancer-related deaths in the U.S. for Black and Hispanic women. Unfortunately, women of color tend not to get their screening mammography as they should. And when they do get breast cancer, it tends to be more aggressive. So, it's something that our country struggles with, I think. Ashkenazi Jewish women have a higher risk of breast cancer due to their higher rate of having the gene mutation. So, there are risk factors that you can change and that you can't change. Some of the risk factors of getting breast cancer that you can't change are getting older, having a genetic mutation, having dense breast tissue. Having dense breast tissue is a twofold problem. It's thought that the fact that you have more tissue increases your likelihood of getting breast cancer, doubled with the fact that it makes it harder to read the mammogram. So, women with dense breast tissue, it might be harder to detect the cancer on their mammogram. So, there are two reasons why women with dense breast tissue are at increased risk. The reproductive history, you can't really change. Starting your period before age 12 and menopause after age 55 increases your risk. Personal history of breast cancer, of course, increases your risk. The biggest risk factor actually of getting breast cancer is having had breast cancer. Your family history of breast ovarian cancer increases your risk. And previous radiation therapy, mantle radiation for young women who have lymphoma in their adolescence are significantly increased risk for breast cancer. And exposure to certain drugs like DES. There are some risk factors that you can change, though. Not being physically active increases your risk, obesity after menopause, taking hormones, and drinking alcohol. Those are things that you can control. How do we know that screening mammography works? The most important thing for a screening exam to see if it works is that it decreases mortality. That's the end goal. That is the test of a screening exam. Does it actually decrease mortality, death, from the disease? And screening mammography gets all As. There have been many prospective randomized trials showing a decrease in mortality in screening mammography, up to 30%, 30% to 63%. The largest study is the Swedish Tuukani trial by Laszlo Tabar, who actually spent a fair amount of time at our breast center many years ago. He showed recently, relatively recently, after a 29-year update of a screening population who had mammography and a population who was not invited for screening mammography, that there's actually a 63% decrease in mortality in the arm that obtained screening mammography. So, our guidelines are that you get a baseline mammogram between the ages of 35 and 40 and that you get annual screening mammography after age 40, earlier possibly if you're at high risk. We also recommend that you get a regular self-breast exam, looking for things more than lumps. Looking for change, size, or appearance of your breast, dimpling, redness, pitting, or any changes, focal pain, change in your nipple or areola, or spontaneous nipple discharge. We also recommend that you get a yearly clinical breast exam by your healthcare provider. So, we have two convenient screening locations, as you might know, one at Long Beach Memorial at the Todd Cancer Pavilion and one at Los Alamitos. We have all 3D mammography machines, the highest, the state-of-the-art machines, including state-of-the-art ultrasound machines. We do stereotactic biopsies, MRI-guided biopsies, tumor localizations. We're very, very busy, actually. We performed over 24,000 screening mammograms last year. And we have a total of eight machines, six in Todd Cancer Pavilion and two at our satellite center in Los Alamitos. So, what have we done? What can we show for ourselves? We diagnosed 163 cancers last year just from screening. And overall, we saw 285 breast cancers in 2023. We have a team of fellowship-trained, subspecialized radiologists. My partners and I, we're all female specialized radiologists with over 60 years collectively of experience. We have a wonderful team of breast surgeons, oncologists, radiation oncologists, and nurse navigators. We have peer mentor programs and a lot of psychosocial support at our breast center. We've received a lot of awards. We're designated as a Comprehensive Breast Imaging Center of Excellence by the American College of Radiology. And we also are recognized by the American College of Surgeons as a Breast Imaging Center of Excellence. We also have accreditation from the National Accreditation Program for Breast Centers, which is an extremely rigorous program that you have to fulfill a lot of criteria to get that recognition. So, it's something that we're very proud of. It really keeps us sort of honest because there are a lot of regulations and policies that we have to have to get that recognition. We were also recognized by Newsweek as the world's best hospital. So, this year, we celebrated 10 years of Hope Lives Here, Breast Cancer Awareness Event. We make a human ribbon, pink ribbon, at the Todd Cancer Pavilion. And Vice Mayor Allen was there. And so, it was a very nice, very nice event. This Saturday is our 25th Annual Team Spirit 5K Walk/Run right here at the waterfront. And we have a lot of... The 5K supports a lot of our psychosocial programs, which are extremely important. We have programs such as mentor programs where we match similar patients together, one who's been through their journey of breast cancer and one who's just starting it. We have Beat the Odds program. And we have a lot of support groups that meet. We even have a yoga support group. And Dr. Maurice Verga is the head of our psychosocial services. And he presented the benefits to a sold-out networking event supported by the Long Beach Chamber of Commerce recently. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
Yes. I just have, just a couple short. I just want to say thank you so much, Dr. C, for being here today. You know, this is a topic that is important for all women. And not very often, we have presentations to council that actually could save people's life. And I guarantee you, there's someone here that's going to be reminded that they can take practical steps to detect this disease, especially in the early stages. And myself, as a breast cancer survivor, I'm very vocal about my journey. You know, I had a friend of mine, Donna Lumen, who called me in my 40s. And I was one of those people that thought, I had no risk, I have no family history, I don't need to get tested. And she kept on bugging me. And she said, "Lord," she had, the Lord was speaking to her, and she wanted me to go get a mammogram. And I did. And sure enough, I had breast cancer. So, you know, this year, I just finished my long journey with breast cancer. And in July, we had some time off, so I was able to finish all my skin grafting. So, I can say after my long journey, I see this diagnosis behind me. And I'm so proud of that. And you know, just remember, everyone, breast cancer is preventable. Okay? So, I hope all of you have a friend like I have in Donna. I hope that someone here is going home and reminding their friends to make sure they get tested. And I hope that our residents stay informed. So, Dr. C, thank you so much for what you do. Thank you for all the team from Memorial Care that is here. And what we like to do, we have a small gift to present on behalf of the Mayor and City Council to say thank you for being here. So, if you just come up, if everyone comes up, we'll take a quick picture.
And I was just going to add, thank you so much, Vice Mayor Allen, for inviting the Long Beach Memorial team to come and present. I have not had breast cancer, but my mother is a survivor of breast cancer. And at my physical this year, my doctor reminded me, my primary care physician reminded me that it is time for me to get my mammogram. So, I got my first mammogram this year. But all this information, right, is absolutely vital for our community and for women. So, thank you so much.
One more thing. I just wanted to say thank you again, Doctor, for being here and for bringing this up. Thank you, Vice Mayor, so much. And we are so happy to have you with us today. I know that, like you said, everybody has been touched by someone. My sister's a survivor of breast cancer. And one of my best friends is not. So, you know, we know the risks that comes with it. But I just want to tell you that I've been to the Todd Center. And one of the things that I'm very proud of is that it is very wheelchair-friendly. And I wanted to say thank you to you and all that make that possible because a lot of women now are able to get their exams right straight from their wheelchairs. So, thank you very much for that.
Very welcome. You know, it's important to understand that everybody has anxiety about cancer and women have anxiety about breast cancer. But I think it's important to understand that breast cancer is treatable if it's found early. And that's where screening comes in. cancer is treatable if it's found early, and that's where screening comes in.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any public comment on consent? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna take care of commission appointments. Do item eighteen, please.
Item eighteen is Communications from Mayor Richardson. Recommendation to receive and approve commission appointments for non-charter commissions.
All right, thank you. There are a number of people here who are here for commission appointments. At the end, we're gonna invite all of you up to take a photo, and I know some folks have their families here, so get your cameras ready. We, this cohort, we've brought together a diverse group of very excited residents, very qualified residents, different backgrounds, representing every part of our city. These individuals reflect some of the most qualified and committed public servants that our city has to offer. So tonight, we're gonna be appointing fifteen new and returning commissioners that are being recommended to ensure that our commissions continue to reflect the diversity of our city, and will continue to work to expand opportunity for all of our residents and families to serve on commissions. Now, to streamline the process, we're gonna be combining items eighteen, twenty-one and thirty-two, three categories of commissioners into one presentation. So, so we, that, the total is four new charter commissions, which I'll read commissioners, which I'll read first, then seven non-charter commissioners, and then four charter commission reappointments, and then we have three separate, after the first vote, we'll go to the second vote, third vote, then everyone come down and take a, take a photo. How's that sound? Sounds good. All right. So first, our first charter commission appointment is to the Planning Commission, Griselda Suarez. So Griselda is Executive Director of the Arts Council for Long Beach. She currently serves as an advisor to the LA County Board of Supervisors Cultural Equity and Inclusion Initiative Council, representing the fourth supervisory district. She's taught at Cal State Long Beach for the Chicano and Latino Studies Department since two thousand and six. She has previously served on the Economic Development Commission since two thousand and twenty-one. Her poetry and short stories have appeared in many journals and literary reviews throughout her career. She's created programming and training dedicated to facilitating transformation and creating agency for her communities. Congratulations, Griselda, for your elevation from economic development to planning. Next, at-large appointment to the Planning Commission is Eric Romero, accredited California economic developer with a decade of experience designing and managing programs that support business, revitalize commercial corridors and advance community development. He currently serves as the Economic Development Manager for the City of Carson, where he oversees the implementation of the city's new economic development strategic plan. He previously served as the Director of Economic Development at Sunstone Management and as the Business Development Officer at the City of Long Beach. He's received his master's in urban and regional planning from UCLA and a bachelor's in sociology from Cal State Long Beach. He resides in Long Beach with his wife Elsa and their sons, Solimar and Camille. Next, to the at-large permission, position on the Planning Commission, Nick Santos, Business Manager, Secretary Treasurer for Launa Local thirteen oh nine, representing forty-five hundred construction workers across the southern Los Angeles County. Former compliance representative, investigating wage-staff cases throughout California, and third-generation union member with a strong commitment to community service from a young age. A graduate of Long Beach State with a degree in finance and enjoys spending time with his wife and family on the Long Beach waterfront. Next is the Police Oversight Commission and at-large Commissioner, Sharlin Bender, former Deputy District Attorney for Orange County, skilled at navigating criminal justice with compassion, active member of the Executive Board of the Long Beach Public Library Foundation, advocating for literacy and accessible information, serves on Loyola Law School Board of Governors, influencing education of future legal professionals, entrepreneurial spirit demonstrated through involvement in startups, bringing innovative perspectives to police oversight. Congratulations to these four new charter commissioners. Welcome. You can clap for them. All right. We have, I'll just list the charter commission reappointments. That's Parks and Recreation Commission. So at-large is Robert Livingston, reappointed to a second term. At-large, Susan Redfield, reappointed to a second term. And at-large, Casey Showen, reappointed to a second term. The Utilities Commissioner, at-large seat Gloria Cordero is reappointed to a second term. Let's hear it for all the reappointed commissioners. Good job, you made it to the second term. Now to the non-charter commissions. The Advisory Commission on Aging, Judy Clark. Began her career in nineteen eighty-eight as a clerk typist with the Department of Water and Power, advancing as senior clerk typist with the Los Angeles City Clerk, former admin analyst to both the LA Mayor's Legislative Deputy and LA World Airport's Legislative Deputy. Served as commission, commission executive assistant before joining Team Han. Judy is a Long Beach resident, mother of two, and shares her home with a five-year-old rescue dog named Arthur. In her free time, she enjoys horseback riding, swimming and cheering for the Los Angeles Dodgers. Welcome. Go Dodgers, World Series. Welcome to Judy. Is Judy here? There she is. Judy, you remember, we had this conversation about you stepping up in Long Beach. I love when we find these people who are in our communities, involved in other cities, and we say, no, we're gonna bring that talent here to Long Beach. Welcome, Judy. Next, on the Airport Advisory Commission, Ryan Gales. Where's Ryan? I think, I think I thought I saw Ryan. Leader in construction management and community development, committed to enhancing urban environments. Graduate from St. Bernard's in nineteen ninety-six and civil engineering degree from UCLA in two thousand and one. Served as a project manager under Los Angeles Mayor Han, focusing on community needs and urban development. Joined JGM, becoming CEO in two thousand and sixteen, and overseeing seventy employees in high-profile projects. Active in community service, Ryan has mentored youth at the YMCA and served as honorary mayor and board chair for LAX Coastal Chamber of Commerce, and he is now in the City of Long Beach on the Airport Advisory Commission. Next is the Belmont Shore Parking and Business Improvement Area Advisory Commission, at-large, Jeffrey Cozart. Beginning his career at the Belmont Athletic Club in nineteen eighty-five, since then, he's dedicated forty-two years of service to his community through the health and fitness industry, helping many live their life to the fullest. Principal partner of the Belmont Murphy's Pub and Shore Strength Lab. Born and raised in Long Beach, attended Jordan High School and J-Town and Long Beach City College, eventually transferring to Cal State Long Beach to complete a BA in psychology. Married for twenty years with his wife Kathy, enjoys fishing in free time and lifelong fan of the Dallas Cowboys. I don't know about that. Next, Citizen Advisory Commission on Disabilities, at-large Randy. I saw Randy earlier. So Randy, a longtime resident of Long Beach with more than twenty years of community engagement, holds a master's degree in social work from Cal State Long Beach. Faculty member at Cal State Long Beach School of Social Work, specializing in macro and leadership, currently serves as Social Services Manager at St. Mary Medical Center. Experienced social worker, dedicated to advocacy for marginalized communities and active members of the Long Beach HIV Planning Committee and the Long Beach Disability Pride Planning Committee. Welcome to K-Cod, Randy. Next, Climate Resilient and Sustainable City Commission, Pearl Hanks, right up front. Principal in charge of P Enterprise Consulting, or is it PE Enterprise? A woman-owned local business that successfully implements sustainability initiatives, reducing operational carbon footprint by twenty percent. Holds an MBA in Finance and Marketing from UCLA Anderson and an MSC in Hydrology from Ohio University and a BSC and BS in Geology from the University of Mumbai. That's a lot of letters, forgive me. She serves as corporate president of the Women's Environmental Council. Expertise and includes groundwater management, flood risk assessment and sustainability initiatives. She's committed to enhancing Long Beach's climate resilience, promoting sustainable development and engaging the community in environmental initiatives. Welcome, Pearl. Welcome to the team. Next, at-large on our Economic Development Commission, Kevin Nortker. Kevin is co-founder and CEO of Amp Air, Long Beach's newest aerospace startup. Caltech-trained engineer who graduated with honors and the school's top leadership award. Former NASA JPL researcher, worked on Mars and moon robots. Former Northrop Grumman engineer and program manager, worked on stealth aircraft technology, defense and weather satellites. Kevin and his team are pioneers in the sustainable aviation. He deeply cares about supporting his community and innovating to make the world a better place. One of our newest leaders in aerospace and space, beach space, and we always welcome another rocket science. And congratulations to you and your wife on your new home and on your baby on the way. Congratulations to you. All right. On the Homeless Services Advisory Commission, District Nine, Pat Scott, longtime North Long Beach resident, retired in two thousand and eighteen after working as a systems analyst for the City of Los Angeles, providing reports to the mayor's office of community development and housing. Experiences have given insight to large housing operations, and the grant process has engaged in various volunteer activities, including being a member of the Assistance League in Long Beach, sewing quilts for veterans, supporting homelessness by providing clothing, hygiene products and organizing cookouts. We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge that Pat is unable to join us today because she's celebrating her wedding. Congratulations to her and her family on this joyous occasion. We are excited for her to join our team and look forward to her contributions as a new commissioner on the Homeless Services Advisory Commission. Congratulations. Please stand all the commissioners, so we can recognize you. Okay, we're gonna go to Councilmember Supernaugh first.
Excuse me, Mayor. I just wanted to confirm, this is three of the agenda items, right?
Correct. We can do the presentation now, then we're gonna take two of additional votes after this.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to do all that three times.
Just making sure we're on the same page.
We are on the same page. Councilmember Supernaugh.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. If you didn't get enough of the fourth district with the Bruce McCray presentation, I think we set a record here tonight, and that is one-third of the appointees and reappointees are from District Four. Thank you all for stepping up and serving, and go forth.
All right. All right, Councilmembers Dejas.
I just want to say thank you to all of you, to the ones that have, were reappointed tonight. Congratulations. Thank you for doing a great job. And for those that are coming new to the family, the Long Beach City family, thank you for your dedication. Thank you for saying yes, and thank you for being partners as we together work to improve our city more and more every day. Thank you for your devotion to our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Kerr.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you for saying yes. I know when people say they're on a commission, not everybody's gonna know what you mean by being on a commission, but as someone who's been on commissions and now works with commissions as advisors, I'm really grateful for the perspective and the insight that you bring to the work. It's an incredibly talented group of people who bring diverse perspectives to everything from parks and airports to planning commissions, things that really matter to our community. You have a voice in, and I appreciate that, and I thank you for saying yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rexody.
I echo everything that my council colleague said. Thank you for being willing to step up and contribute your time in service of our city. We don't take it lightly. As a person who was a commissioner, I understand that these are labors of love, and so I just want to say thank you. And I want to say congratulations to our new District Nine appointees, Judy and Pat. They are brand-new commissioners, and so I love to see new folks be part of the fold and be able to contribute their leadership and their understanding to this and support of our city. So thank you.
Congratulations. Councilmember Duggan.
I want to say thank you to all the commissioners, both new and continuing. The work that you do is really important, and following, learning the protocol, there's so much involved, and it's great to see the work that's going to be done. I also want to shout out Pearl Hanks, who I was able to meet in this process. You have so many degrees, so much, so much that you have to offer our city, and I look forward to what you're going to do. And Jeff Cozart, a local businessman, I'm gonna share with the fourth district, but he is on Second Street. I'm gonna appreciate his work that he's going to do, too. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Allen.
Yeah, congratulations to all the new appointees and all the reappointments. I just, a deep gratitude from all of us for your commitment to our, to our city. I'm also pleased to announce our new appointees. Randy Hope is here. I saw him. I know he's being appointed to the Citizens Advisory Commission, and Griselda Suárez is being appointed to the Planning Commission, so congratulations.
Great appointments. Councilmember Austin.
Thank you. I'd like to just join in the chorus of congratulations to all of our new and continuing commissioners. I want to thank you in advance for your time and your service. None of you are fortunate enough to live in the grade eight district, unfortunately, but I wanted to, as a, as a, as a good sport and somebody who loves Long Beach like all of you do, I wanted to lend my congratulations and support to each and every one of you. So congrats again. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank all the council members for their partnership in this process. And Jeff Williams, I know it's a lot of work recruiting and managing and the city attorney's office and the clerk's office and this whole process. This is a great group of commissioners. We wish you the best. Work hard, work with us. We want to make our communities better. We may ask you to make big changes. That's, that's our job, right? But thank you so much for being a part of this. Members, we're gonna cast our vote, and then we're gonna do all three votes, and then we're gonna come up for the picture. So let's, members, please cast your vote.
For item eighteen.
For eighteen.
Motion is carried.
All right, twenty-one. You know, forgot to ask for public comment. Was there any public comment there?
No public comment.
Great, that counts. All right, twenty-one.
Motion is carried.
Oh, they got a, okay, twenty-one. They got a motion in second.
Item thirty-two.
No, no. Okay, all right, thirty-two. All right, great, I didn't ask for public comment on that. Okay, moved in second. Is there any public comment on thirty-two?
No public comment.
Okay, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Great, all right, please come forward, commissioners.
None of you are fortunate enough to live in the Grade Eight District, unfortunately, but I wanted to, as a good sport and somebody who loves Long Beach like all of you do, I wanted to lend my congratulations and support to each and every one of you. So congrats again, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank all the Councilmembers for their partnership in this process. And Jeff Williams, I know it's a lot of work recruiting and managing and the City Attorney's Office and the Clerk's Office and this whole process. This is a great group of Commissioners. We wish you the best, work hard, work with us, we want to make our communities better. We may ask you to make big changes, that's our job, right? But thank you so much for being a part of this. Members, we're gonna cast our vote, and then we're gonna do all three votes, and then we're gonna come up for the picture. So let's, members, please cast your vote.
For item eighteen.
For eighteen.
Motion is carried.
All right, twenty-one. You know, forgot to ask for public comment, was there any public comment there?
No public comment.
Great, that counts. All right, twenty-one.
Motion is carried.
Oh, they got them, okay, twenty-one, they got a motion in second.
Item thirty-two.
No, no, okay, all right, thirty-two, all right, great, I didn't ask for public comment on that. Okay, moved in, second, there's any public comment on thirty-two?
No public comment.
Okay, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Great, all right, please come forward Commissioners. All right, thank you. Well now, continue on, we have general public comment number one. All right, we have, looks like seven speakers signed up to speak. Dr. Felton Williams, Herman Long, Ms. Bazela Caprice McDonald, Robin Gordon Peterson, Brian Cochran, Jessica Martini, and Kelly Strodel. All right, first up is Felton, Dr. Felton Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, executive staff. My name is Felton Williams, and I'm here to speak on the Proposition Measure JB. And I just want to say, talk about the primary goal of the Civil Rights, Civil Service has been and continues to be to ensure that appointments are based on merit and ability as determined through a competitive process. The Civil Service System enacted nine merit system principles to improve the quality of public service by recruiting employees from all segments of society, providing equal pay for work of equal value, and retaining and separating employees on the basis of their performance. Now, I want to speak to a brochure that supports Measure JB. The brochure states that Measure JB will speed up the timeline to fill vacant positions, including firefighters, paramedics, and police officers. Recruiting for police officers is extremely detailed and different from most other positions due to the need to ensure applicants have the mental and physical ability to serve. The second aspect is training that can take months, and that is done under the strict guidelines of post or the Commission on Post Officer Training. The third involves scheduling an academy for new, hiring new police officers that is initiated by the city. Civil Service Responsibility in all of this is to recruit, certify, and refer. It does not hire. The last item on the brochure, to create an independent community, member-driven civil service employee rights and appeals, this is disturbing because it is part of the civil service. The city would duplicate the work of civil service. You have to ask yourself why a separate process would be created. The current civil service operates on a legal foundation. The one that would be established by the city would not. Consequences, the city would be able to write the rules that suit their particular purpose and change them with little or no accountability. This is precisely why the civil service system was created, to check government abuse. Hiring for all jobs will come under the direct jurisdiction of the mayor and city manager without the benefit of verifying for experience, qualification, or mental fitness. The HR Department does not have the same legal mandate to certify the eligibility of potential employees that are part of the structure of civil service. In closing, civil service was designed to prevent fraud and abuse in government hiring. It needs to be protected. Please join me along with the following voting nuance on Measure JB. Jean Bixby Smith, Dr. Mike Walter, Dr. Mandy Douglas, Ray Gabalich, Dr. Jenny Baxter, Nikki Brown Tenet, former aide to Congressman Alan Lowenthal, Jane Roder, Judy Ross, former executive director of the Long Beach Nonprofit Center.
Thank you, your time is up.
Brayden Phillips, former Bureau Chief for the Long Beach Police Department.
Thank you for your time. All right, next speaker is Herman Long.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Herman Long, I'm the retired Deputy Director of the Civil Service Department. I'm here to express my opposition to Measure JB. The existing Independent Civil Service Commission provides assurances, not promises. The essential elements of a successful recruitment, testing, and selection process must be one in which there's integrity, transparency, honest oversight, trust, credibility, fairness, and equal access. The merging of the Civil Service and Human Resource Departments will result in the elimination of many of these elements. Let me give you a political reality check. There was an article in the Press Telegram entitled "Outside Search for the Next Public Chief Angers Many in Long Beach PD." This was back in 2009. Citing the number of qualified candidates and the cost of a national search, the then city manager announced there would be an internal search and selection process for the chief of police. Five highly qualified Long Beach chiefs and commanders applied. The Press Telegram further reported that officers anonymously said they had heard that an LAPD deputy chief was referred to the city manager by a county supervisor, and that city manager met with this person. Additionally, it was reported that this outsider was seen talking to the mayor at a Christmas party, not this mayor, a former mayor. After the application deadline, the city manager opened up and extended the process for an additional two weeks in order for external candidates to apply. Guess who was selected? A very fine chief, of course, but he was one of the outsiders. If this can occur at the upper level of management, just imagine what will occur with the employees in the classified lower-level positions if Measure JB is not defeated. The citizens, employees, prospective job applicants are urged to vote no on JB. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, next speaker is Caprice McDonald.
Good evening. Bazela Caprice McDonald, born and raised in Long Beach. Just a little bit about myself, I've worked for the City of Long Beach for thirty-three-plus years. I worked my way up, started from as a clerk typist to permanent part-time, and I took every step, no preferences, no favors, I had no personal connections known to anyone. My dad, he was the first black plumber the City of Long Beach had, and he achieved his job through the classified service. He left the city due to discrimination in the selection promotional process. He went on to the Navy shipyard where he was respected and retired, and this is after retiring from the US Navy after twenty years. Just a little fun, some fun facts I want to share with you all today. The last fiscal year, civil service referred out 5,410 candidates at a city. Of that number, 325 were hired, so six percent of the candidates on that list were hired. Of that number, 1,541 were City of Long Beach. Three hundred and twenty, of the 325 hired, 120 were City of Long Beach. And we talk about, we hear a lot about preferences. So currently, there is preference process for veterans. A hundred and twelve veterans were achieved placement on eligible lists. Twelve were disabled. Of the disabled, zero were hired. Of the hundred veterans that were not disabled, seven were hired. And last, I want to just thank the Firefighter Association for showing up at Leadership Long Beach Forum last night because they told the community what the community needed here. They said that it takes seven months to onboard firefighters, and again, civil service does not do the onboarding, thank you.
Thank you, next is Robin Gordon Peterson.
Good evening. It has been quite some time that I've been here. I wanted to go back to the conversation that I wanted to have with you regarding submitting a salary range for Christina Winting. Can I get your attention, can everybody listen, please? I submitted her salary range under the agreement that I thought we had, only to come to this meeting and have it received and filed without any discussion, any meaningful discussion. When the city manager felt that he wasn't being heard, he disclosed to you that there was a four percent increase on the table. There wasn't. I had made an agreement of three and a half percent and gave my word, I would not exceed that amount. That four percent discussion was private, there was no need to bring that to this room. It was a private email that he disclosed because he thought that he might lose the discussion. Christina Winting will need a salary range. Per purr, she has to have one. You can decide what that is, that's your job. When I gave my word that the increase would not exceed three and a half percent, it didn't matter what the range was, I gave my word. I'm a person of my word. And when I talk about disingenuous and half-truths, it's because when her salaries, her increases were discussed in the public to further humiliate her, not once did the city manager tell anyone why those increases were given, why you approved them. The mayor knew, he just happened to not been here because he was taking care of city business. Mr. Modica knew too, but he didn't tell you. And so it led the public to believe that the Executive Director of Civil Service was getting seven percent increases. That was a half-truth. You need to have all the information if you're going to give some of the information, give it all, so that we all have a clear picture. That's all that I ever asked for, the truth. Now, your job is to set a range, I'll let you decide how that's going to be done. I want to make another comment. This is regarding dense breast, because I didn't hear the doctor who was giving the presentation. Dense breast, when your doctor tells you that after your mammogram, please insist on an ultrasound. The ultrasound is what will determine whether your breast has cancer. You cannot determine that with dense breasts. So any women that go in and they're told, and by the way, sometimes they don't tell you, so ask, if you have dense breasts, request and demand an ultrasound so that you don't get stuck with breast cancer.
Thank you, your time is up.
Very much, have a good evening.
All right, thank you, next is Brian Cochran.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I want to continue a theme that we sort of had the evening start off with, which is a little bit of gratitude. I am appreciative, and my community Belmont Shore is appreciative that tonight we are not here to review the Panama Joe's Parklet application because decisions were made that preempted that and made right things for the community. I want to thank Councilmember Duggan especially for taking a stand and helping guide things to the right decision. We're not sure how that arrived, but we were appreciative of the final outcome. We're not sure why the business withdrew its application at this late juncture, but we're grateful for that outcome for the community's well-being. Mr. Mayor, I know how much you care about neighborhood groups and community associations and how important those are to the process for you. All I would ask, and this is my ask going forward, is that this process with the Parklet applications be more transparent, more open, more inclusive of those community groups. We know that a former Councilmember reduced that mechanism, and it's important for us. We would just like to know more of how the reasoning goes into it. We know the Belmont Shore Business Association and the businesses themselves have a lot of input and a lot of engagement on these things directly with the Councilmember and the processes through the departments. All we ask is that that part be extended to us so that we know and it's not something that we find out at the last minute, but we are grateful and we appreciate all the help that's come to that point. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Next is Jessica Martini.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Martini, and I'm a resident and owner at 1187 East Third Street. This building is behind the Long Beach Senior Center that is located near Fourth and Orange in District Two. I stand before you tonight not only as a concerned citizen, but also as a single parent to a three- and six-year-old. I'm here with my neighbors to address an ongoing issue that affects our community, the urgent need for a protective gate around the senior center parking lot and a long-term strategy for the building because of its negative impact on safety in that neighborhood. The situation has become dire. Over the past three months, I've made forty-five calls to the non-emergency line, six 911 calls, and submitted ten requests on the Go Long Beach app for everything from trespassers using needles and inhalants in the open, individuals passing out, destruction of property, theft, dumping items as large as kitchen ovens, and physical disputes in the senior center parking lot. This is in addition to the theft of my personal property in our garage in a break-in one month ago, as the individuals who loiter in the lot linger in the neighborhood. Three weeks ago, someone stole the tailpipe from a car and used it to break open the locked side yard gate at our building. My neighbors and I cleaned up human waste, drug paraphernalia, the contents of a full campsite that was established overnight in the side yard of our building, and I assure you none of that was on my 2024 bingo card. This past Saturday, a community member who has stolen an entire set of postal keys let themselves into our building, stole packages and mail, has unlimited access to the building until the building is rekeyed, the very building that my three- and six-year-old live in along with my neighbors. The senior center has several thousand square feet of unmonitored space that is not visible from the street at a building that does not have staff all hours of the day. Most people who visit or work there are in no position to chase people off, nor should they be. The senior center's planned relocation in four years leaves us with short-term concerns about safety without a gate and long-term fears about what will happen to that building once they move. We received no updates at the senior center town hall in September, and they did not allow any remarks, and there were also no updates at the Alameda Beach Neighborhood Association meeting earlier this month. Tonight, I urge City Hall to take our concerns seriously, and we need action to keep us all safe.
Thanks for coming down, Jessica. All right, our final speaker, Kelly.
Thanks for hearing me. I've been here before, last time I was here was in July, asking about the very same thing that Jessica just talked about. We are mostly just hoping for an update, we've been asking about this since March 2023 in email and writing. We've been going to every meeting we can think of, every time we can talk with city staff, I've been emailing so many people that they are sick of me now. We just want to know when it's going to be gated, and one of the reasons why is because, as Jessica mentioned, it creates a giant gap in the ability to stave off people from coming onto our property. So when PD comes down and tries to address trespassing on one of the properties, they're just swept onto the next property. We have, as I was driving out, our neighbor Mike here, he drove out of the garage, and as we left the garage, there were three people hovering at the building. One guy snuck in right as the garage door closed and tried to make a run for our building, and we had to drive in and call PD. And we were told there's nothing they could do because he went out the emergency door because we caught, you know, we caught him coming in and we told him he needed to leave. And this is our everyday, the month ago that Jessica was talking about, I stayed up all night long chasing out thieves because our garage door was broken, and I had to personally call PD four times, I was up all night long, it was exhausting. We have the mailbox situation, like tens of thousands of dollars of updates to our building just to secure it because of the ongoing issues. And that's not to mention the human waste and cleanliness issue because we have people using our alley as a bathroom, using the parking lot as a bathroom. We've requested, and thankfully Vice Mayor Allen's staff has helped us get some cleanups in the alleyway and the parking lot, but it's just putting a Band-Aid on a situation. And we know the gate's not going to fix it, we just want one piece to help us start making other improvements so that we can work on those other situations, because until that lot is shut down, it's just, it's never going to stop. All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Kelly, and Thomas, someone can get them an update on the fence. I don't know the situation, but I think asking for an update is very fair, so.
Really helpful as well, so yeah.
Okay, great, fantastic, thank you so much. Well, that concludes, that concludes opening public comment. We'll now go back to, let's say, item nineteen, please.
Item nineteen is communication from Vice Mayor Allen, Councilmember Supernaw, Councilwoman Kerr. Recommendation to request Police Department to parry a presentation to City Council in sixty days on the protocols and guidelines the department employs when responding to cases of trespass. the department employs when responding to cases of trespassing and occupying abandoned properties, and request police department to work with city manager, city attorney, city prosecutor to evaluate current legislation and associated impacts on the department's capabilities when addressing incidents of squatting and trespassing, and report back to City Council with recommendation in 90 days.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Kerr and Councilman Suppanow for supporting this item. I submitted this item in response to a very unfortunate situation in District Two. I do want to acknowledge from the start the hard work of the police department and of the Community Development Department. I know that everyone was instrumental in resolving this situation, so thank you. What happened, you know, in District Two was awful. It was definitely traumatic to the neighborhood. And I don't think that as a council, I do think as a council that we need to take steps to ensure that incidents of prolonged squatting and trespassing don't happen in our city. So just to provide some background from my colleagues, there was a certain property in District Two that was occupied by trespassers from January 2023 to June of 2024. And during this time, the trespassers terrorized the neighborhood and made many of the residents feel extremely unsafe. There were drugs, guns, violence coming out of that house. And it turned out that some of the occupants were known gang members. So the purpose of this item is to find out how the police department handles these situations of trespassing and squatting. And additionally, I'd like the department to evaluate current, you know, current laws and legislation and see what's out there. And then, you know, come back to us in council and see how we can strengthen, you know, the department's ability to respond to these incidents of squatting and trespassing. Because I can tell you this, that no resident in Long Beach should have to go through what happened to this neighborhood and my district. I do feel like that we need to do better. We can have known criminals occupying houses, selling drugs, and getting in shootouts in neighborhoods. And just this went on for so long, for over a year. So this is just, I know I'm speaking on behalf of my residents. This was just unacceptable. And I think that, I really don't think that any of you, and I'm sorry what you had to experience. I can say that our code enforcement team was great. But they also shouldn't have to be dealing with issues of assault with a deadly weapon and people entering and exiting the buildings and disturbing the peace. You know, that is the job of the police department to handle these kind of issues. So I'm looking forward to receiving the requested presentation and just the recommendations in the future. So I'm going to turn this over to Chief Wally. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and we will come back with that report. I will note that part of the confusion is related to what you and I have discussed, related to adverse possession and where civil becomes criminal. And trespassing is certainly something that the police department is aware of and should and could be involved in. And so we're looking forward to bringing that report back for a full presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to turn this over to, do you have some questions? Okay, right, Councilwoman Kerr.
Yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor Allen, for bringing the item forward. We are happy to sign on. And I too want to thank Police Department, Community Development, Code Enforcement. Clearly, when we have issues like this, and we know it's not just in one district, we, you know, have some situations in multiple districts. The kind of multi-jurisdictional interdepartmental work that we do is really important. And I think what I would hope to see in the report is kind of those clear lines of communication and the ways that your departments do collaborate together. And then also recommendations of how you need this council to support you in being able to do those more efficiently and effectively and work together. So thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing it forward, and thank you, Chief, for being here.
Yeah, and thank you, Councilwoman Kerr and Councilman Suppanow for signing on. I guess some of the questions too, Chief, I want to just make sure, like, when this was reported, why wasn't it addressed for like breaking and entering like a burglary? And I think we just, we want to understand that. And I think that the community is going to need to understand, like, when is a crime reported? Is it when someone calls in two weeks later when they recognize someone has broken into their house? Is that when the crime committed, or is it when they broke in? So I think as a community, we really need to understand that, especially the residents of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We'll definitely include that. And nobody has the right to break into a property and occupy that. Really, the difference between civil and criminal is, you know, oftentimes we encounter individuals who are occupying an abandoned property, but that had lived there at some point, didn't break in, and could be a civil matter where we need the sheriffs to help assist us in removing that person. But breaking into a property, now we're starting to talk about trespassing, and it becomes criminal. So we'll definitely clarify that in our report back.
And I just want to thank you, Chief. I know that we've talked about this, and I've worked closely with our commander, and I do appreciate that. But I know I'm not the only district that is having issues. And so I think having clarity on these issues. And then also from our intergovernmental affairs, like, if there are things that we can do to strengthen these laws, really important too. So we look forward to your feedback. Thank you. Councilwoman Duggan.
I want to thank the Vice Mayor and Councilmembers Suppanow and Kerr for bringing this item forward because I know quality of life can really change with these impacts. And we've had a lesser issue in the Third District, but we have had to deal with this. So I like the report back on protocols. But I would like to understand what the protocols are as related to trespassing. We talk a lot, I talk a lot with Commander Benson, about the no trespassing signs. And you were indicating that, Vice Mayor. The no trespassing signs and the requirements for the standing no trespassing order. So can we include this in the update about the requirements for no trespassing to be enforced without the owner on site? And then maybe even have a one sheet that we can pass out? Because we are talking about this all the time, and people don't understand it. So let you speak to that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, we can. So some legislation has changed recently, so our trespassing requirements in terms of not having a responsible party signing on beforehand. So we were able to enforce that and have a list of businesses that had signed on for that. Legislation has changed, so we need to go back out, revisit that, and that'll be included in our report as well on how we will do that and educate the community and continue to work on improving the safety.
Thank you very much, Chief, and thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think those are great ideas and suggestions. All right, so Councilwoman Marys and Dejas.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for bringing up this item. I know that this can be a very complex item once we have people infiltrating these homes. So I'm really looking forward to the report back and seeing what our options are. And I just wanted you to know that I'm very supportive of this item.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. I don't see any more comments from my colleagues, so thank you very much, Chief, for being here. So what we're going to do now, we're going to go to a public comment on this. I know we have Cynthia Olivia, Felicia Rodriguez, if you can come up for your public comment.
Hello. My name is Cynthia Oliva, and I happen to own the house next to the squatters. And the house that, basically, it's a duplex, right? So the squatters took over one of the houses first. And at first, I started noticing a lot of trash. I started noticing a lot of different people hanging out. I started noticing people coming in and out of the house. And I would, and, okay. So I was trying to, okay, May 24th, SWAT raided the house, right? And it was at 3:00 in the morning. And June 28th, there was a shooting at the house in which one of the squatters was shooting another squatter. And for me, it was very frustrating because I bought this house in 2013, and I work a full-time job, so I had to like try to figure out what was going on. I would call the police to let them know that there were, well, first, I started calling Code Enforcement, right? Because the house was super dirty. They had all kinds of trash. People, it was just very dirty. And then Code Enforcement would, you know, would say, okay, we're going to send a letter to the owner. And then I had to wait for that to happen. And at one point, what started happening is the squatters were letting sewage out of the main drain, and it was going down their driveway and across my driveway, right? But at first, I couldn't tell what was going on because I would just smell stuff, and my roommates would smell sewage. We would see water. So then finally, I figured it out that it was sewage coming out of their driveway. So I called, you know, Code Enforcement, and Code Enforcement would tell me, okay, you need to call when you see the water flowing. So then I would call Code Enforcement. You know, I had to like look to see when the water was flowing. Then Code Enforcement would tell me, you call when the water is flowing. So then I would call. And it would take a while for Code Enforcement to get there. By that time, the water from the driveway was dry. And then at one point, I don't know exactly how, but I called so many numbers, so many different people, and someone told me, call 911. So I said, okay. So I thought it was strange that I had to call 911 for this, but that's what they told me to do. So then the first time, I didn't realize that I had to like explain the situation. So finally, 911 came out. They determined that it was sewage. They called the next day. Somebody came to clean it up. And then I called Code Enforcement, and I told them, you know, the fire department established that it was sewage. And Code Enforcement said, well,
Thank you. Your time is up.
We don't know that it's sewage. So we have to.
Thank you.
Cynthia, yeah, you only have three minutes.
Just want to let you know that, Mike, it was very, very difficult dealing. And when I try to.
Thank you. That's all we can do is three minutes. Okay, Felicia, maybe you can come up. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Thank you, everyone. I just have to say, I am a tenant who lives right behind the building, and unfortunately, this event's led to a lot of issues of my own where they kept on jumping the fence, or leaving needles. It got very scary. And they even threatened my daughter, myself. And I kept on hearing, I live there, I sleep there, I hear everyday arguments and fighting females, being raped, abused, bravely physically, shots, continuous fights. And I am glad and I'm happy it's finally over. And I hope that I don't see or hear from anyone else going through the situation because it took a very, very long while for us to solve this matter, and I don't wish it upon anyone. So thank you very much, and I hope we could do better for the rest.
Thank you both for coming out. I appreciate your comments. We'll do our best. Okay, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Okay, item 20.
Item 20 is communications from Councilwoman Kerr, Councilman Austin, Councilmember Rick Sodey. Recommendation to request city manager to work with utilities commissions on a presentation to City Council in 45 days on an infrastructure and communications plan overview of Long Beach Utilities, and request city manager to work with Long Beach Utilities Commissions, Long Beach Department of Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Communication, Long Beach Fire, Long Beach Health Department, and other relevant departments on a comprehensive after-action report and presentations to City Council in 45 days regarding the significant water main breaks that occur on October 9th, 2024, and the subsequent boil water notice.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kerr.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. As many are aware, two weeks ago, a significant water main break near the intersection of Wardlow Road and Orange Avenue in the Fifth District resulted in a series of interruptions to the normal flow of life for residents, business owners, and families throughout the city. We know that our amazing city has aging infrastructure, especially in many of our neighborhoods who are commemorating centennial and 75th anniversaries. However, this recent water main break and all associated flooding, street damage, loss of water or water pressure to homes, businesses, and schools, and the subsequent notice to boil water raised lots of feelings of concern and distress. With this item, and I thank my colleagues, Councilmember Austin and Rick Sodey for signing on and support, we're requesting an overview of Long Beach Utilities' Infrastructure and Maintenance Plan, protocols that address situations like these as they arise, and specific to this incident, how it was responded to with particular focus on the utilization and effectiveness of the emergency response and public alert systems. We know a swift response in addressing physical, there was a swift response in addressing the physical disruptions related to the break and repair of the pipe. And I am deeply grateful for the hard-working crews of the utility department for repairing the damage and restoring water to those affected as quickly as possible. Crews literally worked around the clock for several days to address this initial and subsequent break, and I applaud them, and I am deeply appreciative of how hard they worked and their professionalism in doing their job. We had many residents reach out to us in the direct area who watched these crews work for those hours, who expressed their gratitude as well. We also recognize that there is a scientific process with specific legal requirements related to determining the need for a boil water notice. But for many of us not as well-versed in these processes, the notice came as a shock with a lot of unknowns, which led to fear, misinformation, and some distress, even though we know that that notice came out of an abundance of caution. We know that the very nature of an emergency is it occurs without warning and puts our city's response systems to the test. In the wake of this recent incident, it was crucial that we take this as an opportunity to assess our response, the things we did really well, our public alert systems, again, highlighting the successes and identifying areas for improvement moving forward. To help alleviate some of that distress around the unknowns in the future, a report is requested in this item, given as a public record before City Council will help support the future dissemination of information with a general baseline understanding of how and why these types of notices come out and what it means for residents and businesses when they do. Further from this incident, it's clear that our citywide emergency response system needs to be discussed. The boil water notice was issued to our constituents across three ZIP codes. A fifth of our city was impacted by this notice. And we weren't able to sufficiently spread the word to everyone who needed to know. We know that. We received a number of inquiries and concerns from residents, families, and businesses who didn't hear about the notice until well into the following day, some of whom heard about it from friends or family outside of Long Beach before receiving a phone call or an alert. But we also know that the initial notice came out at nearly midnight. Our office stayed up to support that work to be able to reshare the information that utilities put out as promptly as possible. We sent out social media, I think at 12:31 o'clock in the morning. We had a newsletter go out at 6:00 a.m. so that as people were waking up, hopefully catching them to the news. So we also know that the means that we used in our office personally are opt-in. There are people who opt into our newsletter. There are people who have access to social media. We know that as we transition into the digital era, we know that there is still a digital divide. We know that we face issues on a federal level of access for all folks to internet. And so sharing via social media is what we can do in the moment, but we're a large diverse city, and we know that in our district especially, older residents aren't on social media, aren't looking at emails every single day. And smartphone-based or internet-based updates might not be the best way for them to get out information. That could, and in this moment, did potentially affect their health. I think this is one of the bigger emergencies we've faced since COVID, and we can learn from past experiences of how we're making sure that we have systems in place to keep residents safe and informed. And so to begin, I just have a couple of questions. I know, Director, you are here, and I'll give you a moment. Actually, why don't you introduce yourself now, and then I'll ask some questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Good evening. I'm Anatol Fallagut. I'm the new General Manager of Long Beach Utilities.
Thank you. We know that the utility department prioritizes budgets and infrastructure, that that work is ongoing every year. So we're hoping in this report, I think you mentioned in the press conference, $100 million of infrastructure work every year. So in this, we'd love for you to outline what the ongoing maintenance is and how it's prioritized in the system. We know this is sort of a chain-of-command issue. We know that the city is partners in communications and work, but the utility department is under the oversight of an independent board. but the utility department is under the oversight of an independent board of utilities and managed by you, and you report to that board. So if in the report, you could kind of clarify what that is for folks to be able to understand that. And then two more things and I'll pass it to my colleagues. Specific to utilities and this water main break, a timeline of events would be helpful for residents to understand from the time it was notified. I know I was told about it maybe 11:30-ish as people started to see water rushing down the street and you had crews on site around noon, if I remember correctly. And then how was the boil water notice issued? Again, the chain of command in terms of who handles that? I know we had conversations with some of my colleagues and with some of our residents that when we turn on the tap, the water comes from the pipes that are in Long Beach. And so we associate the city manager and the city council and really understanding how utilities provide those incredible services for us would be really important. And who in the organization would be a point person for emergency communications? And then I will actually stop there and pass it to my colleagues if they have things. And then I'd like to address the city manager on some ways the city can partner.
All right, I'm gonna pass this over to Councilwoman Joni, Joni Rick Sodey.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you to Councilmember Kerr for leading on this item. I concur with everything that Councilmember Kerr has stated. And I just wanted to, I knew she was gonna lay it out well, so I just wanted to share kind of my personal experience during that time. And so I just wanted to take a moment to emphasize how important it is for our city to review how we communicate both internally and externally, especially after the recent water main break. You know, during emergencies, as you know, it's critical that residents get clear and timely information. I mean, to make sure that everyone receives the accurate information as quickly as possible. And I think one thing we can improve in is having that fact sheet available and ready for situations like this. I know since issuing a boil water notice is a state requirement, I'll say to me, it was concerning that Long Beach Utilities didn't have that in place beforehand. I would assumed, honestly, that there was some kind of standard FAQ since this is a state-of-California process. And I will imagine, I was, you know, it was a little bit surprising to me that that wasn't in place. I think the timely FAQ would have answered a lot of the common questions and helped to reduce the confusion that a lot of residents felt. I know that I was personally sending utilities department questions. I was seeing on social media from a lot of residents. And because an FAQ wasn't released in a timely manner, I think it ended up being less effective than it could have been in managing people's expectations and clearly defining the emergency for them. And then I will also say, my office also faced communication issues within the city of Long Beach. So for example, you know, the link to the livestream wasn't made available to our office, right? So we were kind of hunting and pecking to try to find out where it was. When the alert finally went out to the community, you know, not everyone affected received it, as Councilmember Kerr mentioned. And those who did said it was hard to understand because of language barriers, and the alert didn't clearly explain what the boil water notice was. One resident expressed their concern that they didn't receive an alert, and then they had bathed their newborn, right, at night. So I just wanna, I just kinda wanna impress upon the fact that there were just a lot of delays there. And then even some of our response, right, was the communication between our council offices and the city and Long Beach Utilities was lacking. So the water distribution in Howton Park, right, I was waiting kind of for official notifications to my office around, you know, what we could put out, what we could tell residents, right? And so a lot of those things were happening, but there wasn't a lot of communication with my office to help disseminate that information. And so my ask moving forward is that we assess and improve how we share that information so you can help us help you, right? In communicating in situations like this, so that we can make sure that our residents are getting the information that they need.
Thank you. And I'm certainly looking forward to hearing from our new General Manager, Mr. Anatol Fallagin. Congratulations on your new role. This happened, I think, three days into his new role as the General Manager of Long Beach Utilities. I'm pleased to have been asked to co-sponsor this item with Councilmember Kerr and Councilmember Joni Rick Sodey. And I hope this discussion will be healthy and will help us identify areas of improvement to ensure, hopefully that this, we've learned something from this and this doesn't happen again, and that we have a resilient water system. I want to commend the work that was, that went into this. This was not expected. And yes, this was an emergency. And, you know, I will say that the response from the crews from Long Beach Water was remarkable. It was impressive. They were very professional. I know firsthand, my neighbors know firsthand because we were impacted. The water main break was right in front of my home. We saw a lot of water, didn't know what that was, but within 30 minutes or so, crews were there and at work, hard at work. And these crows worked very, very diligently and hard for many hours. Many of them had worked over 24 hours on their shift to respond to several breaks at one time. And so I think I want to focus more on the impact of, you know, several, and many of the workers commented to me that, you know, they had never seen this type of activity happen all at once. I think we need to understand what the causes were, right? And that's really what, that's not all. But I mean, I think that's an important piece so that we can, you know, get ahead of, be proactive, and deal with whatever challenges we have to deal with moving forward. Water is very important in terms of our infrastructure in our city. I want to also expect the report to help identify the challenges in our infrastructure and highlight necessary improvements. Additionally, I hope the report will, the report will address the communication gaps that were mentioned. You know, I was, I was, I found myself on pins and needles waiting for more information and trying to communicate along with my team, you know, to my residents throughout the district about what was going on. I thought, you know, the social media work was good. I thought, you know, Facebook and Instagram and then the work of the council offices to kind of support that information getting out was there, but it clearly was not enough, you know? Everybody here may be on social media, most, many in our community that aren't, right? And so I think it was almost 24 hours later, seven, six or seven o'clock the next day, there was a text message alert that went out to everyone. And I thought that was the most effective communication. I had literally neighbors come and knock on my door and said, I didn't know that this was going on. I brushed my teeth, I cooked, I did everything that I wasn't supposed to do during the course of the day. And, you know, and I was left speechless. I don't know what to tell you. You know, we've done everything we can do to get the information out, but that was an effective tool. I know that we don't take communicating like that lightly, but in the future, I would look at that as a first option as opposed as a last option. And then I think I just want to just emphasize to our city manager as well as Long Beach Utility Manager, this is an enterprise fund or quasi-city organization. We appoint the commissioners through this body. And at the end of the day, the residents don't see a separation between the utilities department and the city of Long Beach. It's all the city of Long Beach. It says Long Beach Utilities. It's the city of Long Beach. So we have to own, all of us collectively, any of the failures in communication, any of the challenges that went into that. And we all have to do better in terms of just, particularly with the communication and getting the word out to the residents. But again, we need to also go to the root causes. And I'm looking forward to getting that information as well. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Yoraga.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to agree with my colleagues and their comments. This incident provides two opportunities, a teaching moment and a learning moment. The teaching moment is getting the feedback from us as councilmembers and what we learn from our community and our constituents, what they call us when there's a problem. I know many staff don't get it that. You know, a lot of times, we're in the front line of communication. We're in the front line when it comes to, um, an incident in Long Beach, whether it's violent or an incident such as this. We get the calls right away, whether it's on social media, phone calls, I'm knocking on the door, whatever, we get it right away. And we need answers right away. Here's the learning moment. Now you know that when this incident takes place, what's going to be your response? What happened last time? Let's learn from this. I'm not so much concerned about our physical response to an incident. I think the response was great. Staff jumped on it, fixed it in a timely manner. But what failed was communication. That was where the, where the, communicating wasn't shared with everybody. And that's what we had lacking, lacking in the sense that the information was incomplete or was very delayed. I also heard that there was a possibility that language access came into play. I want to just reiterate, don't let act, language access be an impediment towards communication. Get the word out and then you can translate or, excuse me. Language access should not be an impediment towards good communication. Get the information out. The language access will take care of itself when it starts to translating into different languages, combined, tagging, whatever. What's important is getting the word out. Communication, that is the utmost importance in anything. The other part of it is being accurate. I was, my district was affected, but the information that went out there was very broad and very general. It just gave us a go. 90806, well, my district is much more than just the northern part of my district, which was affected, which is a, in Miami called Wrigley Heights, which is Northern Willow, I mean, yeah, Northern, but simply North, North of Wardlow between Cherry and the river. So my, my district was affected, but not all of it. 90806 also includes Wrigley and parts of, with Long Beach. It was, they were not affected. So there was confusion in regards to where is this incident? And where is it happening? And what do they need to do? So the FAQs that came out, while good, weren't exactly accurate. So let's get that together. But more importantly, as Councilmember Austin says, we're one city, one utility, city of Long Beach. There should always be communication between the city manager's office and utilities or any other department within the city. I got more information at almost midnight from our city manager than I did from anywhere else. And that shouldn't necessarily be because he wasn't supposed to be in that loop. You were. Sorry to put you in that spot or to jump on you that way, but you're the manager. Jump on it, get on it, and make sure that you have all your eyes on it and your teeth crossed when you get things out. But more importantly, it's communication. I can't overemphasize that because that was where the major, the major problem was in this incident. So it's a teaching moment, but also a learning moment. So let's take it as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Suppanar.
Thank you. I assume our General Manager knows this fact, but for the audience, the American Society of Civil Engineers in June estimated that there's a major water main break every two minutes in this country. So what strikes me about that astounding fact is that there may be best practices out there to pick up some communication models that are being used throughout the country. So I'd just like to add to this item. Let's seize that opportunity to see how other communities are communicating on this. The, I'll continue. The second point I want to make was that the language that was used here tonight, this language, "out of abundance of caution." And if that phrase is accurate, great. But if it's a state mandate that because of the low water pressure, we have to exercise this requirement, I think that should be communicated directly. If the state mandate said out of abundance of caution, so be it. But I'd like to have that examined and so we don't miscommunicate. To me, those two phrases have a difference, and I think we should be very accurate in our communicating. Now, I'll really get into the weeds here. When the notice went out on Facebook that included a map, I think that was, I think I saw it at 5:30 a.m. on October 10th. There were immediately comments about, is this in the 4th District? The map shows 90815 and 90808. Well, people weren't reading the red line on the map, but my suggestion would be, why include that if that's not part of the area? So I immediately posted online. Please note, while part of the 4th District, zip codes 90808 and 90815 are shown on the map, only the area within the red line included in the, was included in the boil water notice. No part of CD4 is impacted by the water emergency. And that got 20 likes at that hour in the morning. So I think we just have to be very aware that a lot of different people who may not use social media all the time, let's make the mapping as clear as possible. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Kerr.
Yes, thank you. And thanks to my colleagues for adding to the discussion. So City Manager Modica, just a couple of things. I know we've talked about chain of command and how the city partners in this work. So some of the things I'd like some information on in the report back that are more city pertaining is information about Alert Long Beach and the mechanisms that we use, because we know we need Alert Long Beach and use it. I got my Alert Long Beach. My husband right next to me did not get his, and he is also signed up. We heard from many residents in North Long Beach that they didn't get it either. Those who requested Spanish got the second message the next day, not in a text message, but they did get an email primarily in Spanish because that is their preferred language. So I think it's an opportunity for us to look at that system and make sure that it's going to adequately serve us in an emergency. Again, this was a fifth of our city. If there was a major disaster, if there was an earthquake that affected the entire region, we know everyone's going to be using emergency systems. I would like to know that ours is up to the task of alerting as many folks as possible. I know we use the WIA, the Wireless Emergency Alert, so anyone who drove through at that time got that annoying buzz on their phone, but for some people, it was the first time hearing it. So ways that we could employ that in the future as well. My colleagues already brought up the issue of language access and making sure that the alerts are in appropriate languages and that our residents have the opportunity in that Alert Long Beach system to sign up for the most necessary language for their household or their individuals in their households. I think it would be interesting to see how many Alert Long Beach signups we got after the alert. I know most of us shared ways for people to sign up for that system throughout the 24, 36 hours. And do we have more people? And how and when can we promote and encourage additional signups before another emergency happens? And then this goes back to, I know, Mr. Modica, you and I talked about this, sort of that idea of a reverse 911 and for landlines. So for, we have a significant senior citizen population in our district. Many folks have landlines. We know, I want to say, you said around 40,000 landlines we were able to make a call to in that moment. But I think it's really important that we're figuring out a way to reach everyone. And then my question for utilities would be, if every utility account has to have a phone number associated with it or an email for billing purposes, how are we utilizing that information in emergency situations? Is there a way to opt those people into whatever system? Or do we have to rely on them doing it personally? But really, just making sure that we are getting as much information to as many people as possible in those moments for the next time that our city faces an emergency. And I think that was all the questions that I had. And I think that was all the questions that I had. Oh, nope, I had one more. Not a question, but just a huge thank you in addition to the crews. We know that folks worked really hard to provide bottled water the next day. I don't remember how many pallets it was. I want to say 60, 70 pallets. We had health department employees, um, fire department, emergency management. We had our police explorers out there at two different parks at Houghton and at Somerset doing that work. I want to thank them for the hours that they put in. I saw those, those folks, they happened to be men on the truck moving those pallets for hours at Somerset Park. And it was hard work and important work and our residents were really grateful. So thank you to those departments for activating quickly in that.
Vice Mayor Allen.
I just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Kerr for introducing this item. Thank you Anatole for being here. It's been a long time. It's good to, it's good to see you. I think, you know, it's really important that we understand, you know, how we can just respond to this crisis and then always looking at how we, you know, we can be better. One of the questions I have, Councilwoman Kerr, so it's a 45-day, uh, it's a 45 days on the presentation, presentation coming back to council. So it's a physical presentation. That's, is that, is that doable, Council, uh, Tom Modica, in 45 days? Normally it's 60 days for us, but to have a presentation back to council? So I'm just asking about that timeline. Is that?
Well, we were, we were hopeful and we'll give grace to the departments for sure, but we would love it to see it before Councilmember Austin is, while he's here to hear it. But we also understand that there's work to do.
I think roughly that should work if we had a little bit of time on either side. So we also need to make sure the Board of Water Commissioners has a chance to look at that as well. We want to get it to the council. Oscar to avoid the holidays. But we've already started, um, uh, right after the event. Utilities did a hot wash, which is you look, you know, a couple of days after. And then we actually started again today with our larger group and we're going to be doing more of that. And so this work's already underway.
Okay, sounds like they got flexibility. They'll figure it out. Okay, um, Councilwoman Dejas.
Thank you, Councilmember Kerr, for bringing this item forward. I think that this is a good example of us not knowing what to expect in the city. It's a surprise. It was a surprise to us, but, um, you know, I think that one of the things that we know as a city, especially after COVID came, is that we can expect anything. What I'd like to see is a little bit more partnership and help between, um, the city and the utilities. I think that that would be very beneficial to us all. Also, I would like to see how we can, um, you know, inform those seniors and people with disabilities who have very limited mobility on what to do in case of emergencies like that. So I really support the idea of, um, the alerts that you brought up, Councilwoman Kerr. I think that that's going to be very important, um, going forward in, on our part of the city that we, if we get the information, we could send it out to our residents. I think that that's very important. So thank you, very supportive of this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Exode.
Oh, just two comments. Councilmember Kerr, for the questions that you asked staff, was the intention for you to get the questions answered here or for those to be in the presentation when, or the, the report when we get it back?
In the presentation.
Okay. Um, and then second, you actually got me thinking, I know we talked about Alert Long Beach, but there were two emergency notification systems that we used as part of the emergency, correct? What were those?
So Code Red runs two different systems. One is Alert Long Beach, which has traditionally been the way that we notify. It calls landlines. It also does all the signups for anybody who we've been trying to sign up for the past, you know, several years to get into the system. The WIA Alert is, is also run through that system, but that's really supposed to be more for like Amber Alert. It's, it's emergency public information. It works differently. It actually hits cell phones that come in. So if you lived in Long Beach, but you were with your cellphone somewhere else, you wouldn't get that alert. But if you traveled to Long Beach, you would get that alert. And so they're used differently. And so we also are learning, uh, WIA is a relatively new system, uh, Long Beach, Alert Long Beach we've had for a long time. So we use a combination of those and we used them several times. We also have questions. Mr. Austin mentioned he got it at six o'clock on WIA. We'd actually sent a WIA at 11 o'clock, at six o'clock and at two o'clock in the morning. And so some of those you, we get and some you don't depending on where you are. And then the Alert Long Beach is based on your location, especially the landlines. That's, we have access to every landline in the city. And so the first Alert Long Beach, we'll get into this in the report later, but went to about 50,000 people. So at, on Friday night, um, we hit about, or I'm sorry, Wednesday night, we hit about 50,000 using the Alert Long Beach. And, but WIA doesn't tell us how many people we actually reach. That it does not have that system reporting capability. So we can get into that more in the report.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Cause I would love to hear about the decision-making process about when we use which for what reasons. And then like you said, um, cause I'm just, I'm just concerned about, to Councilmember Kerr's comment, right? Uh, about having an opt-in system for people who don't opt, opt in, like how does that work? And then we have the decreasing usage of landlines in general, right? So I think those are all things that we can consider as we do this after-action report.
Thank you. Councilman Austin.
Just had a question. Have we had any breaks since the occurrence two weeks ago?
Councilmember Austin, we, we have minor main breaks that occur throughout the service area, but none of the magnitude and size that we experienced then.
Okay. And in the report back, you can answer the question if you know now. But also I would love to see a, a, a map kind of outlining where the disruptions were over a, a two-day period. Because it seemed like they were concentrated in, um, certain areas. I know we had two in, in my neighborhood alone, on my block and then a couple of blocks over. So the disruptions were, were concerning. I'd like to just understand the scope of, of the, um, the challenge that we were facing. And then of course, I'll go back to it, like what were the causes?
Indeed, we'll, we'll prepare that. That'll be part of the after-action report.
All right, thank you. We have public comment, have we done public comment yet? We don't have any? All right, I just, first of all, thank you, uh, Councilmember Kerr and the council members for bringing this forward. Just a, just a few thoughts. So one, Anatole, your first week on the job, an ADU blew up and we had water main breaks. You're doing a good job, man. These are big things no one expected. In the 14 years I've been a city employee, I've never seen a water main break to that extent or an ADU explosion to that, to that, anything like that. And so these, so it's okay, it's natural. Don't take it as an ambush by the council. These are new, right? These haven't happened, so it makes some sense to get questions that maybe we haven't gotten before. I was there on scene the entire time from when it escalated to a boil water notice. I didn't see any breakdowns between city side and utility side personally. I think there are questions that have arisen. I'm particularly interested in, you know, I understand that one water main break can trigger others. I want to better understand that. We get water main breaks all the time. I want to better understand that dynamic. There was a lot of questions about the condition of our, our infrastructure in our utilities department. Well, we invest in it and that gets passed on to the ratepayers. And so maybe there's an update. There's a number of new council members here. Maybe we need to do a study session on how that infrastructure investment is different than, let's say, streets and sidewalks and measure A and things like that. So maybe that's something that's, uh, worth raising. Uh, I'd also say, I think it's important that we understand what is and what is not under our control. Because each of these tools that we use, some of them regulated FCC, some of them are not. Some we have more flexibility on, some we do not. Uh, I think an understanding so that we can manage expectations on when we deploy what I think would be important for the leadership of the city to understand. I would also say, we've used the term emergency a lot here. A declaration of emergency is a very specific thing. That's not what this was. And so we need to be clear, what's a notice? What's an emergency? So that we can manage real expectations of what is expected from our leaders. If it's an emergency, there's a protocol there. If it's a boil water notice, which we, I don't remember of a boil water notice in my 14 years time. Do you remember any? So this is the first one. So I think folks, the expectation may look like an emergency, but we need to understand how, how it is different from a billing standpoint, from a public notice standpoint. Are there differences or can we treat it like an emergency? So I think all of these things, I think we just take it as an opportunity to make sure everybody understands what's what? What's north, what's south? Uh, I think the things that came up the most that I, I'm most interested in is the condition of the public infrastructure. And two, uh, of the, of the notice systems that we control, are they the best systems? Are there better systems that we can deploy or, or acquire, procure, right? Those are what I'm really interested in. But I want to thank the council members for, uh, raising this. I think after our reports are always good. We have them in emergencies. We can have them in other things too, uh, because it allows us to learn. So thank you so much. Councilmember Kerr.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of our residents for their cooperation and their patience when this happened. I, I was at the park, um, helping other folks distribute water. We were distributing water for about seven hours and the opportunity to talk to folks was important, I think, for me and for them to be able to express concern, ask questions and be reassured that everyone was doing everything that they could. So I want to thank again the teams that did that and thank all of the folks who have written to us and called us and called our colleagues to ask the questions that they feel like they need answers to. It was a scary day for some, especially folks who were compromised health, folks with disabilities, folks caring for elders, uh, folks with littles. And so we want to really, I want to, I'll speak for me, uh, thank you for your patience and acknowledge that it was a tough day. And the point of this report is really for us to learn more so that next time it isn't quite so tough for so many people. Thank you.
Also want to recognize all those employees that were out there as well. Went and checked in with, with some of them at, at your, your water department, um, a couple of days later. So this was a lot of work for them as well. Crews working through the night, public works. And thank you, Councilmember Kerr, and, and we'll, we look forward to this report. Members, please catch your-
Mr. Mayor, can I say one thing?
Sure.
So I do want to thank the council for, for the good questions tonight. That is important when we, when we look at emergencies or notices, however we do this, you know, we can always do better. This is important. We believe in that. And so that work has already started. We take that seriously. This was a pretty unique one. I don't ever recall a boil water notice in my 22 years here in Long Beach. I think Anatole has seen one and he saw it during an earthquake. And so they, they happen rarely. And so this was something we were all kind of working through. And it's a chance, it was also one that was different where it happens, you know, with the lead of a utilities department, as opposed to our many emergencies that we've done that happen in, in a different structure. And so we were learning a lot and it's helping us think for the future. I do want to say for all the audience though, is while it was scary and we went through it and there was unknown, at the end of the day, there, there was never any issue with the water. So I know we all know that, but for anyone that's calling in, 177 tests were conducted. Every single one came back negative. It was, to, to Councilmember Suppana's point, a state requirement and we'll get into that. But it was done, you know, poor in abundance of caution to make sure that we, you know, we're not putting anything in our bodies that has the potential to be unsafe. So ultimately, water was safe and we didn't actually lose a lot of water, you know, to peoples. People had water during that time, but they did have to boil it in order to consume it. So we look forward to this. We'll come back and, and really go through it and, uh, learn and, and improve for next time.
And I also want to thank those schools too, because they were, they were on top of it, uh, the school districts. So thanks to all our partners as well. Members, please catch your vote.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go to item 26, please.
Item 26 is report from community development, recommendation to enter into a partnership agreement with CD Fabric as part of a grant application submission to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, Environmental and Climate Justice Community Change Grant Program, District 7.
All right, staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there is no PowerPoint, but the U.S. EPA does require us to obtain council authorization, which is what we're doing tonight before applying for a grant. This is in Councilman Yoranga's district. As we've been discussing throughout this year, we're trying every avenue available to us to transform the TI, the Terminal Island Freeway, um, into a park-like environment and a better buffer for the many residents on the west side. This grant will be used to do capacity building, engaging with our residents in the design process to come closer to a shovel-ready design, um, to advance the project. We're required to do the work not just as a city, but with, uh, community partners. And that's what we have done in the grant application. And we're here seeking your approval to apply. There is no guarantee that we'll be awarded the grant, but we do feel confident that we're in a good position. And we've been working with a professional grant writer that has obtained this grant from EPA before for other clients. End of report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Yoranga.
Anytime there's free money available, let's go for it. So thank you for your application and then wish, let's wish each other luck that we are successful.
All right, uh, Councilman Austin, anything?
Happy to support this. Go get it.
All right, any public comment here? Members, please catch your vote.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. 22, please.
Item 22 is report from city manager, recommendation to receive and file a presentation from city manager department, providing an update on the cannabis special events feasibility study. City Y.
All right, staff report, please.
Thank you very much. I will turn it to Grace Yun and her team to go through this. This was requested by the council and we've, to actually come back and, and give a report of where we are. We're about midway through this process. We'll be back in approximately 45 days with additional materials for you to consider. But we have a lot to share with you on pros and cons and public outreach of cannabis potential, or potential cannabis events in Long Beach.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Item 22 on tonight's agenda is an update to the cannabis special events feasibility study. This study was requested by city council on August 6th. I would like to start by sharing the lens used for this feasibility study as it will help lay the foundation for the rest of the presentation. As regulators, and in this case, the Office Cannabis Oversight, we must not treat cannabis any differently than we would treat when regulating alcohol or tobacco. It is a legal industry since 2016 and it is our responsibility to help de-stigmatize cannabis by providing education on what is legal as well as best practices in other jurisdictions. The framework for this feasibility study is comprised of research, internal policy discussions, community engagement, tonight's update, and then the eventual, and eventually in 45 days, a comprehensive report. And I would like to emphasize that the internal policy team is comprised of cannabis oversight, special events and filming, health and human services, as well as our partners in police and fire. Additionally noting that our internal policy discussions were focused on large-scale special events with onsite consumption due to the interdepartmental coordination needed to ensure event safety. Now, in the next few slides, I will cover the state regulations related to cannabis special events. The Department of Cannabis Control, or DCC, referred to as short, defines a temporary cannabis event as multi-day events ranging from one to four days where cannabis can be sold and consumed. These events may only be attended by 21 years, persons 21 years or older. And cannabis goods may only be sold by a licensed cannabis retailer at these events. Temporary cannabis events are hosted by an event organizer or promoter who is responsible for coordinating all aspects of the event, including maintaining the event space and hiring security. In alignment with the, with the state's dual licensing system for cannabis, the event organizer must obtain two licenses from DCC. The first being the cannabis event organizer license, the second, the temporary cannabis event license. And in addition, the cannabis event organizer must obtain local authorization by the jurisdiction where the event will be hosted. And I want to emphasize here that a temporary cannabis event license shall not be issued for a premises that is licensed for the sale of tobacco or, or alcohol. Consumption of tobacco or alcohol is prohibited on the license, on the licensed premises for cannabis special events. Cannabis consumption, whether it's smoking, vaping or edibles at a special event must not be visible for any public place or a non-age-restricted area. Smoking of cannabis goods in general cannot be within, within a thousand feet of a school, daycare center or youth center while children are present. And where smoking tobacco is prohibited. Cannabis special events are subject to daily sales limits, as shown on the table, for both medical and adult-use cannabis, noting that a consumer may only purchase, may only purchase adult-use or medical cannabis, not both. And furthermore, these are the same daily sales limits applied to storefront retailers at the stands right now. And to conclude this section of the presentation, I would like to highlight that the DCC has a dedicated team that is responsible for what they refer to as real-time compliance at cannabis special events. This includes ensuring that all cannabis goods and sales are met on what they refer to as manifested. In the compliance, um, in the compliance system, the state's track and trace system known as METRIC, the DCC has the authority to turn away distribution vans who arrive on event day- the DCC has the authority to turn away distribution vans who arrive on event day with cannabis goods that are not manifested in METRIC, as well as shutting down the sales at the event if an event organizer fails to comply with state regulations such as giving away free samples, which is a huge no. And as part of this feasibility study, staff released an online community survey to obtain an understanding from different stakeholders on what they want or don't want of cannabis special events. It is important to note that this survey was not intended to be statistically valid, but rather to serve as a temperature check as to how people feel about this policy issue. As such, the questions were read in a very general fashion. The survey also asked participants if they were interested in a roundtable discussion with staff. The survey in English was released on September 6th and closed on September 25th with 730 responses. Of those 730 respondents, 155 respondents expressed interest in participating in a roundtable discussion with staff. The survey was also made available in other languages, which were released at a later date. Survey participants were asked to self-identify the stakeholder group that most accurately represents them and their intention for completing the survey. This was not a demographic question. 600 out of the 730 respondents indicated that they were a Long Beach resident. And to better understand their perspective on cannabis, participants were asked if they are a consumer of cannabis. The results for those questions are pretty split, as shown in the pie chart, with 45.8% indicating yes, 45.5 indicating no, and the remaining 8% indicating prefer not to answer. Participants were asked what types of cannabis special events they may be interested. This includes music festivals, as are commonly heard of, tasting impairing events, educational conferences, trade shows, exhibition and expos. And what you see on the screens are just sort of the raw data collected from the survey. Participants were also asked if they are interested in indoor/outdoor events, with 47.1% indicating both and 42% indicating none. Participants further were asked if they are interested in non-ticketed events, ticketed events, with 45.8% indicating both, 41.4% indicating none. And furthermore, participants were asked if the city were to develop a cannabis special events ordinance, would they be interested in the following considerations, as listed on the screen? Prioritizing cannabis special event permits for local cannabis businesses was the top choice for this question. Second to requiring large-scale events to partner with local cannabis businesses, and third, indicating none. Participants were asked if they had any concerns about cannabis special events. Attendees driving under the influence of cannabis was the top choice for this question. Second to exposure to smoke, and third, security. The written responses from the survey were pretty split with preliminary themes indicating that those in support expressed desire to allow cannabis consumption at events the same way as alcohol is allowed, prioritize local cannabis business, support the legal industry, and diminish the illicit market and underground cannabis events, and expressing how this opportunity can increase local tourism and economy. Versus those with concerns stated health risks such as secondhand smoke and exposure to the community, concerns about driving under the influence and ability to adequately enforce, concerns about cannabis consumption being allowed at all city special events, and stating if tobacco smoke is not allowed, cannabis smoke should not be allowed either. The intent of the roundtable discussions that we've hosted so far is intended to delve into the responses of each stakeholder group. Hence, we asked the first question on the survey, which stakeholder group do you best identify? Solicit additional feedback, as well as provide general education on what is allowed at cannabis events per state regulations and best practices. To date, staff has conducted three roundtable discussions with three different stakeholders. This includes the Long Beach Collective Association, or also known as the LBCA. We also met with our verified equity applicants in our cannabis equity program. And we also, in addition, we met with the Coalition for a Smoke Free Long Beach, which is one of the community health partners. And so, we do have some additional pending roundtables that we are requesting additional 45 days to complete these roundtable discussions with these stakeholders who also express interest in the survey. Now, moving on to the research and best practices in other jurisdictions, I would like to start with the city of Oakland, who have allowed cannabis special events since 2018. Initially, Oakland limited the number of permits to 12 per year, per location, individual or entity, to prevent a specific location from becoming what they call the de facto dispensary. However, this provision was waived for a one-year pilot period to foster more opportunities for equity applicants and is set to be reinstated this January. Cannabis special events have been held at the Frank Age Ogawa Plaza, which is their city hall, and the Henry J. Kaiser Center for the Arts. Most recently, a prominent cannabis event known as the Emerald Cup was hosted at the Arts Center on August 17th and 18th. This was a two-day ticketed cannabis special event, which included a music festival, competition, marketplace, with onsite consumption, an art gallery, educational speaker session. And I want to note that city of Oakland staff indicated that there were no issues out of the ordinary for this event. And then further, did it go, sorry, in, sorry about that. And so, I do want to note that in 2018, in alignment with their existing special event process, the city of Sacramento passed a resolution to authorize the approval of cannabis special events at Cal Expo, which is 350 acres in size with 18 different venues and facilities that can host 1,000 to 10,000 attendees. And earlier this year, the state fair was hosted at Cal Expo featuring what they call the Cannabis Experience, including a cannabis exhibit, onsite sales and consumption. City of Sacramento staff indicated that there were no issues outside of the ordinary for this event. I would like to emphasize that the cannabis consumption that took place at this event was took place in a foreign distinct area from the rest of the fair activities. In other words, it was a completely separate event premises. This is a very unique example and it was feasible for this jurisdiction, given that Cal Expo is 350 acres in size. Most jurisdictions do not have state fairgrounds that they can activate and have the ability to host dual events. And on this slide here, I want to note, in 2018, the city and county of San Francisco established a pilot program and framework to allow cannabis special events. And I want to highlight that San Francisco's Cannabis Special Event Ordinance is very detailed and has been amended over the years to strengthen the program and framework, such as only allowing local cannabis retailers to conduct sales at these events. In other words, a cannabis event organizer cannot bring their own cannabis retailers or connections per se outside of San Francisco. This is starkly different than the example in Sacramento as the cannabis event organizer also happened to be the sole retailer allowed to conduct sales. The amendments to San Francisco's ordinance introduced equity criteria requiring event organizer to describe how they will support the city's local equity goals. And furthermore, under San Francisco's pilot program, cannabis special events are limited to the following. And so, only the following persons or groups are able to host events. So, those events that have been previously held on a regular basis, events in prior years having received a city-issued permit, or events in prior years having significant unregulated sales of cannabis consumption, which will be determined by their equivalent of Office of Cannabis Oversight to be eligible for a cannabis event permit. Currently, there are seven organizers that fall under this criteria of the previously held on a regular basis. Most recently, the Outside Lands Music and Arts Festival was held at Golden Gate Park on August 9th through the 11th. And lastly, San Francisco staff indicated that there were no issues outside of the ordinary for this event. Now, shifting over to our jurisdiction, I want to take a moment to spotlight the Greenlight LB program, which combines community education, systems and behavior change, and strategies to reduce drug impaired and distracted driving, as well as implementing youth cannabis prevention activities and ensure that adults can make responsible decisions related to cannabis. Greenlight LB also administers the city's responsible cannabis vendor training program, which is intended to assist all cannabis retail licensees in finding appropriate public health and compliance training for staff. What I want to emphasize here is that the Greenlight LB program will continue to exist whether the city council proceeds with the cannabis special events policy. If a policy is passed, then this program will simply coexist with cannabis special events as it does with existing cannabis licenses that are currently allowed in the city. And in partnership with the city's Community Health Bureau, we would like to underscore health impacts to the community such as secondhand smoke and vapor exposure, outdoor exposure risk and drug driving risk. So, on this first section here, it's noting that indoor cannabis events are likely to produce unhealthy levels of secondhand smoke and vapor, with studies indicating that cannabis smoke generates significantly higher levels of particulate matter than tobacco smoke posing serious risk to cardiovascular and respiratory health, particularly for vulnerable populations. And the second, in the middle, we have outdoor events may not fully mitigate the risk for workers as evidenced by a study of law enforcement officers providing security at outdoor concerts. Small amounts of cannabis were detected in the post-event urine of 34% of officers and many reported symptoms such as red eyes, dry mouth and headaches during the events. And lastly, we have a meta-analysis of study concluded that cannabis doubled the risk of crash involvement and data shows a significant increase in traffic accident post-legalization. Allowing events where consumption is permitted would likely increase the number of intoxicated users on the road. Furthermore, there is a risk of thirdhand smoke, or THS as it's referred as well, which is the leftover contamination on surfaces and dust after smoking, which can linger and re-enter the air long after the smoking event ends. Studies indicate that THS from cannabis use contains THC and contaminates indoor surfaces like tables and chairs, even with ventilation, suggesting that people could be exposed to THC and other chemicals by touching these surfaces, even if they weren't present when the cannabis was consumed. These findings highlight the importance of carefully considering how shared community spaces will be utilized for cannabis special events as lingering contamination could pose health risks for future occupants. And on this slide, I want to note that staff is recommending cannabis special events to follow the existing special events application process if the city council were to pass this policy. I want to highlight that as it stands, the City's Smoking in Public Places Ordinance stipulates exceptions for filming and special events. On top of this, when a special events permit is issued to an event organizer or promoter, it becomes a private activity. This allows for the organizer to designate outdoor tobacco-smoking area as part of their private venue if they so choose. The same approach would be followed for cannabis special events with onsite consumption. To authorize cannabis special events, an amendment to the city's Cannabis Ordinance, which is Chapter 5.92, would be required to adding new operating conditions sections for this cannabis activity. Chapter 5.92 currently has a separate section for each of the cannabis license and activity. So, for instance, we have a special section on retailers, cultivation, manufacturing. We would follow that same format for special events. And this amendment would also require a temporary waiver to the City's Smoking in Public Places Ordinance for the duration of the cannabis special event with onsite consumption. This is similar to San Francisco's ordinance as it stands right now. And as part of the internal policy discussion, staff have identified safety concerns such as exposure to secondhand cannabis smoke, potential staff impairment and inability to operate a vehicle during and post-event. While various policies and procedures may be developed to limit this exposure, certain situations may arise where secondhand smoke is unavoidable, particularly emergency situations where staff are required to respond in the designated cannabis consumption area. Based on research of best practices in other jurisdictions and existing special event regulations in the city, staff is open to exploring solutions to address staff safety concerns such as exposure to secondhand cannabis smoke. An ordinance to permit cannabis special events would have an impact on city employee working conditions. And as a result, before any ordinance updates can be considered and approved by the city council, the city has an obligation to notice all impacted employee associations prior to approval and implementation of a cannabis special events ordinance. In other words, a meeting confer process with the impacted labor groups must ensue before staff can return to the city council with the draft ordinance. And on this screen here, we do have a list of potential policy considerations. So, the first being to safeguard the city's ability to collect cannabis taxes and enforce local regulations. Any sales of cannabis and cannabis products at special events may only be conducted by a licensed Long Beach cannabis retailer, regardless of the event's size or location. Number two, to prevent any location from becoming a de facto dispensary. As noted in the Oakland example, special events permits will be limited to six per year, per individual, business entity, business owner, event organizer or promoter. This limitation would apply to both licensed Long Beach storefront retailers and delivery-only retailers, which are coming in the future. Number three is a city manager or Zegzagni shall be authorized to impose conditions on cannabis special event permits at their discretion to ensure overall event safety. This includes issuing permits to only event organizers or promoters with the proven experience in hosting large-scale events with onsite consumption. Again, this is a pretty similar example to the San Francisco model. And next steps include completing the feasibility study and issuing a comprehensive report within 45 days. At that time, the city council could then direct staff to prepare an ordinance for cannabis special events. Please note once again that the meeting confer process with the impacted labor groups must be successfully completed in order for a proposed policy to move forward. Once the meeting confer process has concluded, then staff will bring back an ordinance for city council consideration. And that's the conclusion of my presentation. Myself and my colleagues are available for any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We'll go to public comment. Before you do, did I see it correctly that you said Oakland City Hall was an approved site?
Not the building itself, but the plaza in front, so.
Interesting.
Yes.
I don't think we're going to be doing that. Okay, we'll go to public comment. I see four members of the public signed up to speak, Sanaa Kinfe, Patricia Edum, John Kendrick and Edgar Cruz. Sanaa, you're up first.
Sanaa Kinfe, 6th District President. Thank you for the feasibility study, Ms. Romero and team. I appreciated the opportunity of you utilizing some of the leaders in the space with respect to cannabis events such as city of San Francisco. I've worked for the Outside Lands Festival a few times and cannabis element has provided a substantial amount of sponsorships as well as opening up the revenue stream for the city. I think this is an opportunity for everyone to eat. We just have to make room for everyone to eat. And what that looks like is, you know, Walian team, you guys get to eat with the. Okay, okay. I know you don't do Ramadan, so I don't believe that. I don't believe that. I don't believe that. Everyone has the opportunity to eat, but we got to mandate it much like we had to do with inclusionary housing. You have to make space for people that have been held on the sidelines. The people I'm describing are those that are still participating, for whatever reason, in equity program that the city of Long Beach alleges that it's adhering to. And what that looks like is policy recommendation 1, 2, 3 and 4. If you saw in the example that Ms. Romero utilized in the study is that city of San Francisco, as well as city of Oakland, they have equity built into the cannabis special events process. So, what we're looking at is the funneling opportunity. You have to do it, you have to use local retailers. You have to do it on a city-owned or publicly-owned property. Okay, you also have to have equity participants that are mandated to have some type of space within the marketplace. Otherwise, millions and millions of dollars are going to be left on the shelf for these people that have already been left on the shelf for years now. It's not fair, you know? It's not fair to compare cannabis with tobacco and alcohol because RJ Reynolds doesn't get to hold millions of dollars in property tax until they get some type of tax relief, you know? And alcohol-wise, there would be no uncle nearest in any cannabis example because of the inherent anti-blackness with respect to currently how cannabis operates in the city. So, with that being said, I love the opportunity to funnel more money to our parks. This could be an opportunity to pay for our parks in perpetuity and facilitate some of the oil money that's declining. I just believe that there needs to be room made for the equity cannabis applicants and partners who aren't necessarily a part of the apparatus as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. I'm Patricia Edum. I am a resident of the 3rd District. I'm a vice president for a National Health Workforce Equity Program. I'm a five-time governor's appointee to the state legislature. Um, I'm a five-time governor's appointee to the state, uh, legislated Tobacco Education and Research Oversight Committee. So you were here earlier, um, commending your commissioners. I, that was a time that I spent from twenty-ten through twenty-two volunteering, twenty-twenty-two volunteering my time and expertise in the health sciences to support statewide tobacco prevention and education programs. Um, to the T-Rock Board, the State Department of Public Health, the State Department of Education, and the UC Office of Research, reported to the body. Um, we were responsible for the funding of Proposition Ninety-Nine monies, which also supported the fabulous Long Beach, um, strong tobacco, uh, ordinance. And it's most concerning to me that the city is even entertaining, um, essentially a smoking event, marijuana. And, uh, when you mentioned, for example, six events per license holder, I have no idea, maybe there are a hundred in the city. So that would be six times a hundred, six hundred events and suspending the ordinance, the tobacco ordinance. Essentially, you would be undoing the tobacco ordinance for the city of Long Beach. And I have to say, Long Beach is one of the awarded cities for protecting, um, its residents with a strong tobacco ordinance. That would be a devastating tragedy, devastating. Um, thank, I was a part of, one of the roundtables, appreciate that. The survey really was a, um, a vendor survey for all intents and purposes. Um, there are some things that are not covered in, in the survey. I would like to know for risk, what really is the risk, the monetary risk for the city? You know, it, it's driving under the influence. There are so many risks and the monetary risk was not covered in, um, in that. And that's one thing that I asked for. Um, I'm a two-time Olympian and as the city of Long Beach is one of a, the host cities for twenty-twenty-eight with many events, marijuana is a banned substance, so I'm the concept.
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay, the concept of destigmatizing is out of left field and I certainly wouldn't propose this or have this during the Olympic year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is John Kendrick.
I am the co-chair of the Long Beach, uh, co-influencer for Smooth Free Long Beach. I'm also the co-founder of the Long Beach Environmental Alliance, and I belong to many other organizations here in Long Beach. And I can't believe that you're gonna put profit before health. You know, since this became legal, we have not been able to enforce not one policy or regulation when it comes to this, to marijuana on any level, and it's only gotten worse. This is from our streets and our beaches every day. This is what I've done personally, and it's been more, and it's only gotten worse. This is not just a health issue, it's environmental and climate. This even goes against your cap because when this plastic breaks down in our environment, we are consuming this, it's in our blood system, and we know about the plastic, what it's doing to us. Also too, whenever the beach crews clean up the beach, those heavy machinery, they chop it up to its real fine, and it ends up into our marine environment. We eat the fish and everything because we're the top of the food chain. And now you want to sell this stuff? We put commercials out there saying, "Don't do marijuana and drive." But now we're gonna sit there and sell it to people at an event and then have them drive on the freeway. And people are gonna bring the stuff to the event because you can't search them and find it. And they're gonna bring legal and illegal stuff and cause other unforeseen problems. And third-hand smoke, when they go home and pick up that little six-month-old baby, that child will now assume it. So I understand you worrying about your revenue on oil, but you know something? Putting people's health in danger is not the way. And I'm gonna give this to your staff. This is from the CDC, the American and Long Socations. Since they made it legal to do research now, they're finding all kind of things, and this is just as bad as tobacco. And this is passed on to our unborn children. So if you wanna put profit before people's health, within, you know better than the tobacco companies and others. And they're also putting money into marijuana. And this is every day on our streets. And in twenty-thirteen, this city paid over thirteen million dollars.
Thank you, your time is up.
And cleanup.
Thank you.
What are we doing now in twenty-twenty-four?
Thanks. Our final speaker, Edgar Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and dedicated city staff. My name is Edgar Cruz, and I am here as a participant of the Long Beach Equity Program as well as an advocate for equitable opportunities in the cannabis space. First, I want to express my support for the cannabis special events feasibility study being discussed today. It's encouraging to see the city take steps to creating opportunities for the cannabis industry, particularly through the special events license. However, while I support this agenda, I would like to see the city make more of an effort to support equity businesses as part of this process. As many equity recipients still face significant challenges, whether it's accessing capital, navigating through the regulatory environment, or competing with larger operators. This new license type presents an opportunity to address those challenges, but it requires an intentional action from the city. I urge you to prioritize events, opportunities for equity applicants, provide technical assistance to help equity recipients through this process, and create pathways for equity businesses to fully participate in these events. Additionally, I believe that the new incubation plan will only be effective if it includes stronger enforcement measures for operators who have not complied with city ordinances or have failed to pay their taxes. Um, holding these operators accountable is critical to ensuring the industry does not continue to face the same issues it has since recreational cannabis has been approved. Um, while this opportunity is open to all operators, it is essential that equity businesses are prioritized and not left behind. Equity businesses, equity brands, and micro-businesses should also have an opportunity to promote and sell their products as many still face significant barriers to obtaining full licensing. Uh, currently, there are no operating retail, uh, equity businesses, uh, in the city of Long Beach, and it's unlikely that we'll see any, any soon due to factors beyond equity's control. Uh, without targeted support, we risk, uh, perpetuating the disparities that, uh, the equity program was designed to address. Um, I appreciate the efforts of the Cannabis Oversight Council and the other departments and divisions on this presentation and study. I hope that the equity businesses remain a key focus as we move forward with these new license types, and thank you for your guys' time and consideration.
All right, thank you. So that concludes public comment. Uh, back behind the rail, just so everyone is clear, this was, this is a feasibility study that is ongoing. No decision has been made by the city council about, uh, whether you will or will not, uh, open this business lineup, and there are still questions to be asked. Uh, this is an opportunity for the council to further ask further questions. If there were things brought up in the presentation that you wanna go a little deeper on, you want us to research a little bit further, uh, questions about the timetable, questions about, you know, how, you know, how staff is thinking about what those venues could be. Those are all fair questions, uh, but we need to just be, be very clear on what's in front of us as a receiver file presentation. That said, we'll, uh, we'll go to the council, Councilman Austin.
Thank you so much, um, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I wanna appreciate all of the public comment. Um, you know, much of what I've agreed with, and I think there were some great points. Ray, I wanna thank our staff especially for the very, very comprehensive and balanced, uh, um, presentation, you know, kinda looked at it from all angles, um, which was very much appreciated. Uh, I'm not aware of too many policies in which we actually go out and do surveys and survey residents. Um, I think the response in this particular, um, survey, I think, um, was pretty extraordinary compared to, to others that we've, uh, done. Um, our budget survey, what were the respondents on that? Our budget chair said about two-hundred people responded versus seven-hundred plus in this, this, uh, this item. Um, and I know we've done others on other items, but, but not much. Um, so I wanna point that out. A couple of items mentioned, points that were mentioned that I very much agree with, um, the priority should be given to local businesses for such events. Um, I think San Francisco is getting it right, and we should also put a great emphasis on equity partners, um, in our city. Um, they have been left behind. Um, I'm really not happy with where we are with, with that program, um, and this is expanding opportunity. Um, I also like to, I don't wanna extend this beyond, farther than it needs to go. Um, hopefully, this council will get to a place, a landing place where they're comfortable with moving forward with an ordinance. But, uh, the local economic boost should not be understated. Um, there's a real opportunity here. We look at our biggest events in the city, right? The Grand Prix brings in about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and ninety thousand. Um, Long Beach Pride, a hundred thousand. Well, the, the one event that was done in Sacramento this, just a couple of months ago, at the Cal Expo yielded over a hundred thousand participants over two days. That's, that's nothing to, to, to sneeze at. That's, it's an important emphasis that this would be a very, very, it could be a very big and lucrative event for our local businesses, but in, in, in attracting people to, to Long Beach. I know we have, and this council has been very intentional about making Long Beach a, an entertainment destination, right? Um, utilizing our space creatively, and, uh, I think this would certainly accomplish that. Also wanna just, just point out the obvious. Anybody go to a concert lately? I've been to a half a dozen in my, uh, over the last, uh, year. And, uh, yeah, you know, cannabis is everywhere. It's everywhere, even our city-sponsored events. I just wanna be clear on that, and so, you know, um, our city employees are already exposed. They've been exposed. The Barb Marley Festival used to be an indoor event. I personally think that, you know, to, to mitigate any of the, the concerns related to residual impacts and secondhand, um, smoke, I think, uh, we should, we should look at an outdoor, um, mandate for, for such events. Outdoor spaces or preference outdoor spaces. Um, also wanna just point out the fact that Governor Newsom just two weeks ago signed AB seventeen-seventy-five that allows local jurisdictions to forbid cannabis cafes, uh, to operate. And that, I wanna dispel some, some misnomers out there. It's not all smoke. It's in the food. Consumption in edibles and, and, and drinks and gummy bears. So, I mean, it's not all, all smoke. I wanna be very clear on that. Um, I think, um, something that was missing in terms of the safety component, we should also be looking at, you know, um, planning these events, and I know I see Tasha there with special events. There should be some, some partnerships and built-in partnerships for rideshare programs, um, for not just this, but I would also say, you know, the Wine Fest that we have, right? We do have one of those or a couple of them. I know we have a Beer Fest that happens here, you know? These are, these are substances that impair you, and it's okay here in the city of Long Beach today. Um, I'll go back to your first slide if you might wanna help us out and show that to us.
Yes, related to the lens, correct? Should be the, I think, slide number three.
It's related to, to not having a bias about how we look at cannabis. It is a legal, um, product in, in, in the state of California and in the city of Long Beach. So, so again, I wanna be, be, be very clear, and I think we need to also, um, move forward with that lens in mind, all of the above. Um, best practices, I know a couple of cities were mentioned. Um, I would, would, would love to understand, like, what, what were the negative impacts on, um, these events? We, we have the city of Santa Rosa that hosted the Emerald Cup for many years. Um, we now have the city of Sacramento that's hosted a very large, uh, consumption, outdoor consumption event. San Francisco, we have Oakland, we have Las Vegas. Um, I, I believe Las Vegas hosts the Big Smoke. Wonder what that does for their economic impact? I just think we need to think bigger. Um, we need to be a future, future-thinking city, and, and, uh, I, I do respect the work. Um, you, you know, I led the effort to, to ban, um, flavored tobacco in our city, right? Um, I, I was on with that policy because it was, it was, we, we do not want our children to be exposed to anything that's gonna be detrimental to their health. But I also wanna dispel the, the health, um, argument as well. Before, there was a dump adult-use cannabis consumption legal, there was medical marijuana. And so there are medical values, uh, to, to marijuana and, um, health values to it as well. And so, uh, again, I wanna thank staff for your work on this. I understand that you have to continue your, um, feasibility study as you go out in the community. Uh, remember that, that first line, um, in the first slide here is in terms of how we, we, um, how we move forward with, with our regulations, our future ordinances, we need to look at this industry on, on the level as we would any other, um, industry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, council members in the house.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first and foremost, I wanna thank Councilmember Austin for inviting me to co-sponsor this item back in August, um, and thank you for your, your thoughtful comments. Um, I echo your comments and support that. Um, I also want to thank staff for all your hard work around this. This is new to us as a city, so I know that you guys are going, um, you know, learning as you go, so thank you for that. I really, really appreciate, um, the visuals from your presentation, the pie charts, the graphs. Um, I think that that is easier to understand, um, because this is a, a very complex, um, issue to be, you know, to be working through. So I really do, um, thank you for that and for all the work that has been put on. Um, I know that for special events, it's new territory, um, but I think that we are moving in the right direction, so I encourage you, um, to be able to, um, move forward in this feasibility study and bring us, you know, options that, that could work for our city. I love the examples of other cities and what has worked for them. I think that's really great. Um, I, I, you know, in the presentation, I saw that there was, um, that something that, you know, I'm also still learning, and something that was new to me, um, that I, that I noticed was that there's, um, in the presentation, it's aimed to not have any other substance when having a special event like this, and I know we're still in the feasibility stage of this. Um, and I was under the understanding that in some other cities where this has worked, that they might have different, um, designated areas for other consumptions of, uh, like alcohol and tobacco and stuff like that. Is that something that, if you could clarify that for me?
Yes, I can speak to that. So in those instances, and let's say this, the Sacramento State Fair example, um, they are considered sep, the key word here is premises, so they're considered separate event premises altogether, separate events, um, managed by different event organizers. And so with the State Fair, it was because of the space, um, because it's three-hundred-and-fifty acres, and they have different facilities within that venue, they do have the ability to, um, have... And they have different facilities within that venue. They do have the ability to, um, have the cannabis retail area in one area. The consumption area, those are also separate within that space. But say if there's alcohol being sold as part of the regular State Fair activities. That was essentially like way on the opposite side of the State Fair. Um, in other, I think, um, when we spoke to the DCC, um, they gave the example of, I believe it was at Alento, that they also had a similar situation. But again, these are much larger spaces than we have available in Long Beach. And so if City Council were to proceed with this policy as staff, we wouldn't recommend to have the kind of the dual event concept that you're hearing, just because it's for safety reasons, it's, we would not be able to, um, you know, ensure securely that the, the two things are not going to mix up, which is those being alcohol and tobacco. Cannot be in the same space, um, as the cannabis event. And I do want to know, I think there was a comment made earlier about, um, you know, checking for, for people not bringing their own thing. So again, these can only, cannabis can only be sold by licensed retailers at these events. Um, and like any other event in the city, whether it's a concert, whatever it may be, there are security checks. And so we are, in these cannabis events, they are checking that nobody is bringing their own personal cannabis products, no alcohol, of course, no tobacco. Hopefully that provides some clarification.
Thank you very much, Valencia. I really appreciate that. As we all know, um, can, the cannabis industry in the city of Long Beach has, um, a rich culture here. Like we have a big population of cannabis. Um, and so I'm really encouraged by, by this feasibility study. And I really would like us to also, um, focus on the equity programs and giving them the opportunity to be part of these special events. And I know that we'll definitely take that into consideration as we're doing the feasibility study. So thank, thank you very much for that.
Yes, thank you. And if I may add for the equity component, um, like the Sacramento example, like San Francisco also add that they have an equity plan, that this is put on the event organizer. Um, but I do want to emphasize that anybody in theory could be an event organizer. It could be somebody who has an equity business can do it. But for our equity applicants, I am very happy to report that, um, for our equity dispensaries, we just finished that selection process about a month ago. Two out of those eight have now found locations, um, to, for their dispensaries, two more are in the process in the next two weeks. And so I say that because those eight equity dispensaries would have the opportunity, you know, based on the proposed policies or proposed recommendations, they would have the opportunity to be a retailer at these events. And so that is one way that equity has a footing in these events as well. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. And that's, that's good because whenever we hear equity, we always hear the, the problems with the process. So I'm glad you actually brought up some progress that you're making on the equity work. Councilmember Exode.
Uh, yeah, um, thank you for highlighting that, uh, Mayor. Um, I just had a couple of just clarification questions. So I saw in the community survey, um, that, um, basically approximately half the folks who filled out the survey were users, half the folks were, were non-users. Um, and then about half the survey basically said that they weren't interested in a, like a, like a cannabis special events permit. Do you know if the folks that essentially said were not interested, were also just the same people who just don't tend to use cannabis anyway?
That's very likely, but I have, we, that's part of the analysis that we have to take a look at as part of the remaining part of the feasibility study. And so what you saw in the presentation earlier were just sort of like the raw results of the survey. Um, that's part of our analysis that we would like to do. Typically speaking, that's generally what we see, but we want to be able to do a formal analysis on that.
Excellent. Yeah. And so one of the interesting, interesting things I would, um, like to highlight as part of the roundtables, because I know you're going to be reaching out to community groups and nonprofits, is kind of tease that out a little bit. Because I imagine there's essentially kind of two camps, right? Are folks who aren't user, users and would be interested in this and they'll have a variety of ideas around how they plan for this to be rolled out. And then there'll be community members that don't and are primarily, you know, concerned about the quality of life issues related to these special event permits. And so I know I would be interested as we're potentially crafting, uh, an ordinance around that to, to see, to see something come back that, um, discusses that and makes that clear, uh, to the council.
And that's why we did hold the, the, we asked a question about stakeholders because we do understand that this could be a very divisive issue. And so we want to have those roundtable discussions, which are intended to be small group. Um, and just to give a safe space for those, um, concerns to be expressed in that.
Um, and then I noted, I think it was on like slide 23 for the city of Oakland, but this is related to something that council members in DeHassan, Councilmember Austin, mentioned around the equity applicants. I know that they were a couple, I don't know if I called them best practices, but they were definitely policies and programs that other cities had put in to incentivize, um, a more equitable distribution of the, of the types of, um, people who run these events, who, you know, who are vendors at these events. And so again, and I, I appreciate you, um, highlighting the progress we've made with our, our equity applicants. And so I think in my mind, if we were to move forward with this, I'd want us to craft something in a way that incentivizes that. Right? As an opportunity that we're giving to our equity applicants. Uh, and then lastly, uh, and I know that this will be, you mentioned this will be included. Um, yeah, I'm very interested in hearing what are the potential mitigations and solutions to address what I know are the coming concerns around staff safety. Um, and public safety. You mentioned the things about, you know, impaired driving, et cetera. I'm sure that, that cities have, that now have these events have, um, had to tackle these challenges and will have come up with some types of solutions. And so I'm interested to see what those variety of those solutions are going to be. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Maryland.
Yeah, thank you for this. And I, I do also appreciate Councilman Austin and, and Zindehassan for this item. You know, I, I'm a, um, I'm an advocate for this. I think that, um, I think these, uh, these cannabis events are advantageous for us. I think, um, you know, cannabis is, is legal. And if people want to go to a cannabis event, then so be it. If they don't and they don't want to be exposed, then don't. But, um, but I, I think that we should, uh, uh, you know, look at this. Also, I, you know, I'm, I'm obviously, um, very interested in, um, the safety to staff and, um, and, you know, uh, police department and how that exposure would, you know, how other cities like, uh, San Francisco or Oakland have, have addressed. You know, we can't have a, uh, uh, armed police officer exposed, um, and then I'll call, you know, doing calls for service. So I don't know how they dealt with that. So I definitely would like to know a little bit more, uh, how those issues were, were addressed. And then, um, I really like, um, the, you know, using small businesses, but I also like to put out there, I think that we also should limit, um, only using businesses that are up to date on their taxes. I know that we have quite a bit of, uh, folks out there who, who are not paying their fair share. So I think part of that should be, I don't know if that's, that's probably a city attorney thing, but, she's looking at me. I don't know if, but, um, but I just think that that's a fair thing, um, that they should, if they haven't paid their city taxes and, and I don't know if we're allowed to do that. But, you know, hey, I look forward, I look forward to a big event. Maybe Snoop Dogg will come here and we'll have a big smoke out at Queen Mary. Who knows? But, um, but I, I think, I think it's a good thing.
All right. Snoop Dogg, Queen Mary. Okay. So I'll just add my comments here. Thank you so much for the presentation. It raised a lot, a lot of questions that I think we can answer. I think timing, I think for this conversation is key because we're taking steps to explore, uh, a public amphitheater. Because we passed in the budget funding to do an entertainment strategic plan. I think some of those questions around venues and traffic and transportation can be answered as you evaluate some of those, uh, some of those factors. I also think, um, I agree with what I've heard, if we head in this direction, uh, to prioritize equity in some way. I've, you know, I've, from the first cannabis mid, first from medicinal to the non-medical recreational policy, to the equity policy, to the deliveries. We haven't, we've tried equity a number of times and we've failed a number of times. I'm glad to hear some progress on the most recent iteration. Thanks, Councilman Austin, for helping lead that effort. But it, it, it does make me just a little wary. When we talk about equity, we have to, we have to actually deliver here. Uh, because there's been so many times that, that cities, not just Long Beach, almost nearly every city that's attempted equity. It's been a learning, um, experience and we, if, whatever we do, I just hope that we don't over commit and under deliver. Whatever happens there. I also think, um, I would love in the next presentation to understand what the meet and confer process looks like with the, the work, the employees. That are city employees that will be associated with this. So special event staff, police department, what does that process look like? And, um, so that you can understand sort of what the pathway forward is. I've heard different concerns. I've also heard, hey, there are ways that other cities have addressed it. Let's get to the point where we've, you know, we can actually understand what's at stake. But in general, um, what I'm hearing around economic opportunity aligns with what the city council is, has previously established as a priority. Which is exploring entertainment arts and culture as revenue drivers. Thanks a lot. We've heard public comment. Uh, members, please cast your vote to receive and file.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Next we have item 23.
Item 23 is a report from City Manager, recommendation to receive and file a presentation on establishing a quiet zone feasibility on Union Pacific Railroad right away. CDY.
All right, just a moment. Uh, it's a staff report. Let's go to the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this was an item requested by council. Uh, we've been doing a lot of research on this, on both the quiet zone feasibility and, um, uh, potential of a memorandum, memorandum of understanding or some sort of other agreement with Union Pacific Railroad. Uh, it's been a longstanding community issue. Uh, Long Beach isn't, uh, unique in that in that there, when you have a train through, uh, your town, there tends to be externalities that come along with that and it's federal property, uh, managed by the railroads. And so, uh, happy to give a presentation today to talk through some of the, the challenges and some of the potential opportunities. I'll turn that over to Tyler Curley, Deputy City Manager, and Teresa Chandler, our Deputy City Manager as well.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so we want to provide an update on a couple memos that we, uh, sent out last month. And these were in response to, uh, two different actions on July 16th. Asking for a feasibility, looking at establishing quiet zones at two different intersections in Long Beach. And, uh, the process to essentially strengthen our partnership with Union Pacific through potentially a memorandum of understanding or, um, you know, another approach to make sure that we're coordinating with Union Pacific on some of these core issues. So we did have a couple of different teams working, um, and meeting with Union Pacific and other stakeholders. And, uh, even last week, we met again with Union Pacific to make sure that we understood their perspective of both of these issues. And I did want to note that, um, Union Pacific did provide some public comment, emphasizing a few key pieces related to both memos, uh, just so that you're aware. So for the quiet zone feasibility, um, we, we did convene, uh, a number of folks from various departments that would be impacted. Um, and related to this work. So obviously City Manager's Office, Public Works, Health and Human Services and Community Development were involved in learning a little bit more about the quiet zone process. And, uh, we met with not only Union Pacific, but also, uh, learned from cities of Pomona and San Jose, which have established quiet zones and gone through the process. Ultimately what this is, and I know, um, you know, the council had, um, a healthy discussion about this process in July. But, uh, the FRA regulates rail operations across the country and they have a rule that requires them to sound their train horns. Uh, but between 15 and 20 seconds ahead of all public grade crossings. And what a quiet zone would do, if you're able to meet certain technical and infrastructure requirements is, um, would allow them to not have to sound their horn every single time, but only really if there are people that are on the tracks. Um, and so I, obviously this is of, of interest to find ways to minimize the impacts of, uh, those horns and, uh, rail operations near especially residential neighborhoods. So at a high level, um, this is what the process would look like for the city. Uh, we would have to engage with the FRA, with the California Public Utilities Commission, with Union Pacific and the property owner, uh, at the two intersections that were mentioned in the council action, uh, to begin that process. We, the city, would be responsible for completing a diagnostic assessment, um, that would really tell us what are the infrastructure and engineering improvements that would be needed at both intersections, uh, in order to be compliant with these federal regulations. And, um, we would need to reimburse Union Pacific for their staff time and resources to engage in that process. And they estimate that about, uh, $25,000 per intersection, but it would be on a reimbursement basis. So it may not be exactly that amount. Um, but ultimately, you know, around $50,000 total for both intersections total. And, uh, in addition to the assessment and that process. Of course, then the city would be responsible for any of the traffic design improvements. For example, adding crossing gates, um, and we would have to work with Union Pacific if we were to add, um, lights or other signal facilities, um, at both of the intersections. And then last, I want to emphasize, of course, that all the costs for those infrastructure improvements and the ongoing maintenance would ultimately be, uh, the city's responsibility. But this is high level, at least what the process would look like. Um, and then some of the initial upfront costs to engage in that process. And with that, I'll turn it over to Teresa Chandler, uh, to talk a little bit more about the other item and how we can strengthen our partnership with Union Pacific.
Thank you, Tyler. All right. So in the second part of the presentation, Alvin and I are going to share our team's approach in exploring the potential of establishing a memorandum of understanding with Union Pacific Railroad. So similar to an MOU, UPRR once established with the city of San Jose. We were hopeful that this MOU would allow us to work collaboratively, collaboratively to address the growing homeless encampments that are near railroad, railroad property within the Long Beach jurisdiction. So following City Council's directive on July 16th of this year, the city manager was tasked with exploring an MOU. Um, and though we already have been working with them through our inter-jurisdictional collaborative network for the last several years. The city wanted to consider tightening our partnership in response to ongoing concerns raised by residents, businesses and local officials about the negative impacts of homeless encampments along the railroad tracks. Encampments on Union Pacific properties not only present serious safety and security risks for railroad employees and neighboring communities, but also for the unhoused individuals who are living there. The proposed MOU would enhance our collaboration to address these issues more effectively, including encampments, overgrown vegetation and illegal dumping. The ultimate goal is to promote public health and safety, particularly in areas where UPRR properties are adjacent to residential neighborhoods. This agreement would be a key part of our city's broader strategy to ensure a safer environment for all. According to our 2024 point in time count, there are over 3,300 people experiencing homelessness in Long Beach, as you all are aware. A number, this is a number that highlights the scale of the crisis that we are addressing. Some of the individuals have established encampments on Union, Union Pacific Railroad properties. When looking at locations across the city where people reside, when they are living outside. These properties are particularly vulnerable to encampments due to their largely in, in unfenced nature, making them very easily accessible. The challenge of consistent monitoring adds to the complexity, allowing many areas to be re-occupied even after they have been cleared. One of the major concerns with the encampments on these properties is a significant public safety risk they pose, including potential accidents involving trains or hazardous materials and other dangerous situations. Our efforts to address these encampments are not only focused on the immediate safety of all parties involved, but also on finding long-term sustainable solutions for those experiencing chronic homelessness. And this partnership, um, is key to that approach. Local residents and businesses have expressed increased frustrations about the unsanitary conditions and these conditions pose not only health risks, but also contribute to the overall decline in neighborhood safety and cleanliness. The strain on public resources has become evident as city departments are being called upon more frequently to address these issues. Putting additional pressure on services already tasked with managing broader citywide challenges. The presence of individuals living near or on the tracks heightens the chance of dangerous accidents involving trains, potentially leading to serious injuries or fatalities. Moreover, encampments often involve unsafe conditions like open flames or hazardous electrical setups, increasing the likelihood of fires that could spread quickly to nearby structures or under brush. Adding to these risks is the fact that many railroad corridors either contain or transport hazardous materials. This creates an additional layer of danger as individuals could be exposed to dangerous substances, particularly in the event of leaks or accidents involving chemicals or fuel. Although railroad properties are federally owned, oversight and operations of these areas fall under the jurisdiction of Union Pacific Railroad. This distinction complicates local efforts as the city does not have legal authority over the maintenance or management of Union, Union Pacific's rights of way. As a result, addressing issues on these properties often require a collaborative approach where local jurisdictions alone cannot act. Though the railroad is now conducting monthly cleanups, encampments along railroad properties remain a persistent issue. In many cases, these encampments reappear shortly after cleanups, demonstrating the challenges of sustaining long-term solutions. In many cases, these encampments reappear shortly after cleanups, demonstrating the challenges of sustaining long-term solutions. Specific areas such as Candlewood Street, Orange Avenue, and locations near the ninety-one freeway have become well-known hotspots for reoccurring encampments, further complicating cleanup efforts. Enforcing trespassing laws on these properties present another layer of difficulty, as overlapping jurisdictions between federal, local, and corporate entities slow down the response times. Additionally, limited resources available to monitor and address these encampments compound the challenges faced by both the city and UPRR, making it difficult to provide consistent enforcement. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Alvin to discuss the feasibility of the MOU and our next steps.
Thank you, Teresa. So before we get into that, I do want to highlight some of our existing interjurisdictional efforts and collaboration with UP. So the Homeless Services Bureau does coordinate outreach efforts with UP through county-funded interjurisdictional liaison and other interjurisdictional collaborations. So the Homeless Services Bureau and the city interdepartmental team do conduct outreach and service connections in the areas immediately around the Union Pacific property. Union Pacific also conducts cleanups at least once a month responding, they do respond directly to reports submitted via their reporting system through approved subcontractors with specialized crews trained to handle cleanups along those railroads, which often involve hazardous materials, and we will get to that in a second in terms of how we can submit those reports. And also, while UP does employ its own police force and secures their own railroad lines and properties, Long Beach Police Department does accompany those cleanup crews to provide security and other coordination. In terms of outreach services, Union Pacific does contract with CityNet, which is a service provision organization that provides street outreach to unhoused individuals and connects them to transportation, housing assistance, hospital transfers, or family reunification services, as well as collaborating with our existing homeless services system here in Long Beach. When talking with Union Pacific, they did emphasize that they do have two reporting mechanisms for which the city of Long Beach residents, as well as city staff, can submit reports and requests. So for emergency incidents, things like life safety concerns, fires, hazardous materials, there is a number one eight 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 seven 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 two six seven. That is for emergency calls. For non-emergency, non-emergency issues such as encampments, blocked crossings, illegal dumping, vegetation, there is an online portal in which residents and city staff can submit requests for cleanups. In response to the request by City Council, city staff did inquire with Union Pacific about the possibility of an agreement modeled from their MOU with the city of San Jose. UP did clarify that their previous MOU with San Jose is no longer active. This MOU, which allowed the city of San Jose to access Union Pacific properties to conduct their own cleanup efforts, was put in place but prior to UP contracting out for their own outreach and cleanup services, and in response to hundreds of people encamped on Union Pacific property. The city of San Jose did also allocate significant financial and in-kind resources, including staff resources, to directly conduct outreach, cleanups, and post-cleanup controls, none of which were reimbursed by Union Pacific. It is also important to note that coordinating cleanups on railroad properties also requires special equipment, special training, coordination with UP to ensure safe train line suspensions during cleanups as well. We also would like to highlight that there are significant costs, even if the city were to assume responsibility similar to those in San Jose, including waiver of permit fees, encampment cleanups, graffiti removal and vegetation abatement, homeless outreach and encampment abatement, post-cleanup patrols and security, as well as fencing and landscaping maintenance, all of which would be at the cost of the city directly. While an MOU for directly conducting cleanups is not feasible at this time, the city and Union Pacific are also currently exploring other opportunities to expand services on Union Pacific property. One potential opportunity is granting access to Union Pacific property for Health Department staff in addition to the Police Department. When Union Pacific, while Union Pacific deploys its own security, the Long Beach Police Department does have an active letter of agreement with Union Pacific, which allows LBD's officers to enforce trespassing violations within twenty feet of Union Pacific tracks, tow abandoned vehicles on UP property. But it should be noted that this letter of agreement is limited to enforcement and cannot be amended currently, so Union Pacific and city staff are in the process of exploring a new vehicle in which access to Union Pacific property may be extended to homeless services outreach staff, who, in partnership with the Police Department, may be able to go out and engage people experiencing homelessness who have encamped on Union Pacific property. And we are also exploring ways of expanding and streamlining coordinated responses to also include service referrals for shelter and housing through Long Beach's coordinated entry system. In conclusion, so a formal MOU is not feasible at this time due to Union Pacific currently providing services directly, as well as the significant costs associated and interjurisdictional challenges. As next steps, the city staff will continue pursuing an agreement with Union Pacific to allow expanded access to homeless services outreach teams accompanied by LBD officers, and continue existing interjurisdictional efforts to work with Union Pacific to better respond to the needs of both community members and the people who have resorted to camping on these properties. Residents are encouraged to report issues along the railroad using the previously defined reporting channels to encourage timely responses from Union Pacific as well. This includes our presentation, and we are now available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment here? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it back behind the rail. Councilman Austin.
Yes, thank you again, staff, for great work. Thank you for looking into the feasibility of doing a, establishing a quiet zone and memo memorandum of understanding with Union Pacific Railroad. We brought this item forward in an effort to amplify the voices of, and the frustrations of many of the residents in my district who are impacted by activities along the railroad, including encampments, fireworks, screaming, noise, but, but also the railroad itself, the trains themselves. I do understand, and when we brought this item forward, we understood it was complicated. And my team had spent a considerable amount of time researching what was happening in other jurisdictions to just look for answers, right? Look for answers for our residents, and, and so we'll continue to do that. I'm glad that we've brought this to the attention of our city staff. Our Health Department is well aware. Thank you for the presentation, because the points raised demonstrate that you all understand the, the severity of the issue and the real nu, I won't, I'll say it's beyond a nuisance for, for the residents who live along the railroad track. We still have challenges with brush today, right? Today, we, we, I've put in the request to have that mitigated as much as possible. I've talked to our fire chief, I've talked to our city manager, and we'll continue to advocate to get make sure that we're doing all we can to prevent the fires and the, the I would say the unfortunate circumstances that can happen. We recently had, since we brought forth the item, we've had a handful of fires along the railroad tracks. And, you know, all we can do is tell our residents that we understand and we are working on solutions. I do, I, I, I wanted also point out that, yes, I'm well aware of the interjurisdictional committee that works together to address these issues. I know we made some great progress even with that group. Can you tell us how often that, that team meets? Who's involved? And, you know, maybe some of the success stories that have come out of it?
Sure, I'm going to bring up Paul Duncan to talk specifically, because his team attends those meetings and leads those meetings directly.
Good evening, council. So there's two different interjurisdictional groups that meet. We have a larger expanded group that includes our state and county partners, but also own a lot of private ownership, the UPRR. A couple of the oil refineries that are here in Long Beach, they own a considerable amount of property and have some enforcement mechanisms of their own, as well as we coordinate with our surrounding jurisdictions, Signal Hill, Seal Beach, and really ensuring that we are working together with some of the property that abuts each other, so that group meets every other month. And then we have a smaller group that's focused with our county and Caltrans partners, and they meet every other week to discuss those properties. It is the largest of the, the participants in the interjurisdictional, some successes, you know, during the pandemic, we saw a lot of people on Caltrans property. We were able to work through some MOU mechanisms, and really working also through some of the challenges that were coming up on the riverbed. We had a lot of stuff coming up on the San Gabriel Riverbed, and we were able to engage some of the neighborhoods around there, working through some of the the challenges, making sure people that were informed, and trying to bring additional resources to those locations.
Thank you, and I, I kind of knew some of those answers, but I wanted to make sure that for the benefit of those listening at home or out in the audience, they, they understand as well. I, I want to just say to our, our city team, Mr. Duncan, Teresa, Alvin, you all have a major, a serious, serious responsibility. It's a big job to deal with the unhoused challenges that we have. But those unhoused challenges do correlate with the railroad, and this is why we brought this forward. So I definitely will look forward to, to the, the ongoing conversations with Union Pacific Railroad. If you will please keep my office and future eighth district offices and council apprised of what's going on, any developments along there. It would be really nice to have like a schedule of, of cleanups that we can look forward to and communicate with, with our residents, any sort of work to mitigate challenges that are currently there, we want to know about it. That, I think that would be helpful, so we can communicate that to our residents. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Younga.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank Councilmember Austin for his comments. And I totally agree with everything he said. It's unfortunate that we're dealing with an interjurisdictional issue here, where we can't go into an MOU right now, but at least we can continue to make that effort to, to, to go to one eventually someday. We're working silos, so our effort is to get rid of those silos and work together as one team, so that we can better address the issues that we have facing with, with the unhoused along the tracks. So thank you for your efforts. Adelante.
All right, thank you. We already asked for public comment, so members, please cast your vote.
Councilman Austin. Motion is carried.
Twenty-four, please.
Item twenty-four is a report from Community Development, recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing the participation in California State Department of Housing and Community Development's Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program, and acceptance of a loan and grant in the amount of twenty-eight point two millions for the construction of an affordable housing project at nine twelve through nine forty-six Linden Avenue, District One.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Megan Sorensen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chell Stoppa will be giving the report tonight.
Good evening. This item is a request to adopt a resolution authorizing the participation in the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program for an affordable housing development at nine four six Linden Avenue. The Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program provides funding for the construction of new affordable rental housing units and related public infrastructure improvements. On February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, the City Council approved the submission of a joint application with developer Amcal Multi-Housing for the construction of a one-hundred-unit affordable housing project. On August twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the city and Amcal were notified that the application was successful and received a conditional award of twenty-eight million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars in loan and grant funds. The proposed project will create one hundred new large family rental units consisting of thirty-eight one-bedroom units, thirty-one two-bedroom units, and thirty-one three-bedroom units. Eleven units will provide housing for extremely low-income households, eleven units will be for very low-income households, and seventy-seven units will be for low-income households. One unit will be reserved for an onsite manager. The project will include a community room, a fitness area, computer center, top lot, and a courtyard and barbecue area. The funds that have been conditionally awarded include a twenty-million-dollar loan to Hamgal for the development of the project. Repayment of the loan will be the responsibility of Amcal. Eight million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars of grant funds have also been awarded to be used for infrastructure improvements and transportation amenities, including a new class-four bike lane, sidewalk, and bus stop improvements, and installation of transit signal priority software to reduce commute times. The award is conditioned on the city adopting a resolution authorizing participation in the program and acceptance of the program terms. The adopted resolution must be provided to the state by October twenty-eighth. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the participation in the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program and acceptance of a loan and grant in the amount of twenty-eight million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars for the construction of an affordable housing project at Linden Avenue, and increase appropriations in the Housing Development Fund by eight million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, offset by grant revenue. This concludes the presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, this is a beautiful project. Congratulations to you, to the project team, to the developer, and, and I love the, the AHSC program, Strategic Growth Council, SCAG, all involved in allocating funding there, some very familiar with the program. I'm glad to see that Long Beach continues to lead and bring down resources. This was like the greenhouse gas reduction funding, the cap-and-trade money, right? So it's glad to see more of that being spent here in Long Beach. Councilmembers, and Dejas?
Thank you. I'm so excited about this project. Thank you so much. I just like, can't wait for the construction to start. Affordable housing project is so necessary, especially in that neighborhood. It's right across the street from Saint Mary, and I am just thrilled about that. I know that it's very early on, but I know that my residents will be asking me, so I'm going to ask if you have any idea of how the process for accepting applications to live in these units will be? If you don't have that information right now, I totally understandable, but maybe you can share what in the past some of these affordable housing projects have, what have they done when accepting applications?
Sure, so it's very early. This is actually the second-to-last stage in completing the financing package for this project. So the developer will be applying for tax credits in the spring of twenty twenty-five, and if those are awarded, then we would hope to start construction in twenty twenty-six. Typically, at the time that we start construction, usually we ask because we're going to have a lovely groundbreaking event, and people start calling our office to see how they can get on the waitlist. So at that time, we would have a website set up specifically for interested parties, where they can electronically get on an interest list, or they can call someone and have their name added to an interest list, and at that time, they will get regular updates as soon as we have them available as to when the lease-up process will start. Lease-up processes usually start about six months before the end of construction, and construction will take approximately twenty-four months. So we have a long way to go, but we'll definitely have a, a process established, and I'm sure we'll have lots of, lots of interested people in this, this beautiful project.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that answer, and I think my residents would absolutely appreciate that, and think, and it gives them some idea and what to expect, even if it's, you know, far far, far from now. So thank you very much. I'm super excited. Did I say that already? Thank you.
All right. And thank you for raising that point, Councilwoman Zendehas. I know we've explored ways to package properties together or having lists that people join. I also know there's challenges given the way different projects are funded, different requirements and all of that, but I think we should keep working toward it as we continue to build more housing, a way to streamline the application process. So someone, let's say they don't get into this one, they can be added to the line to the next one that qualifies for whatever, you know, affordability rate they qualify for.
And Mayor, we do have some good news on that. So while we haven't figured out the tail end of that, the application process, we do keep an interest list now, a unified interest list. So Megan's going to tell you about that.
Sure. Yeah, just this year, actually, we developed an online interest list. So we are compiling that, and it's a great way for people throughout the city to get notified as soon as the opportunities to apply for any of our projects becomes available. And that's a great idea. We definitely will add those who are not given a unit to that interest list each time we have a new project lease up now. And so within the next few years, we expect to have quite a substantial interest list formed and continually growing. But certainly, they'll be the first to be notified. And just reminding you, so far, we have been very successful in keeping our Long Beach housing preference policy. And so all of our units typically, I'd say 99% are leased up to Long Beach residents or those who work in Long Beach. And very often, the first people on the interest list are from the immediate neighborhood because we post signs about how to get on the interest list on the construction site.
That's great. It's great to hear that update on that progress. You know, we're the front door on a lot of different services, and a lot of times, people think the only way in is to join the Housing Authority Section Eight list. It is not. That's a particular list that the city manages, but that is not the pathway into much of the housing that we're building. So we need to continue down that trajectory. Thank you so much. Is there any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Twenty-five.
Item twenty-five is a report from community development, recommendation to adopt resolution authorizing the participation in California State Department of Housing and Community Development's Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program, and acceptance of a loan and grant in the amount of 24.2 millions for the constructions of an affordable housing project at 1401 Long Beach Boulevard, District One.
Thank you. Another project, if we can just see the picture, because it's probably the same details as the last presentation.
Yeah, we'll breeze through it. Chell Stavva, just go to the project details and the picture. Yeah, so some project details is this will be 153 new large family rental units, 74 one-bedroom units, 42 bedroom, and 39 three-bedroom units. Thirty-eight units will be for extremely low-income households, 60 units for very low-income households, and 53 units for low-income households. Two units will be for an onsite management. Project will include a community room, fitness and yoga room, bike storage, play structure, and two courtyards and barbecue area. And here's the latest rendering.
Another beautiful project. Councilmember Zendehas?
If I was excited about the last, I'm super excited about this. I know that our Washington neighborhood is going to benefit so much from having this, from having this housing project there. And it especially excites me to know the income, very low-income housing and housing. Also, it's also right across the street from our beloved Fourteenth Street Park, walking distance from Washington Middle School, Roosevelt Elementary, and Poly High. So I'm super excited to see all the wonderful families that are going to be able to benefit and be able to live in such a beautiful place. Thank you for all your hard work that has been done to bring this forward. I'm super excited about this. Thank you.
Does that say that this comes with four electric buses?
Yes, that's part of the scope of work for this ASIC program.
To Long Beach Transit?
Yes.
Interesting. Is that typical?
So these, we call them ASIC, but these ASIC applications are actually a lot of work and a lot of partnership goes into them. We start preparing to submit the application approximately a year before they're due, and we are working very closely with our Public Works colleagues and also Long Beach Transit, because we have to show in the scope of work that there are transit-oriented improvements, not just for the city, but for the community at large.
Yeah, no, I've seen, you know, the bus shelters, the sidewalk expansion, the bike connections. I just don't think I've seen one that actually included four electric vehicles. So that's incredible. Yeah, good job.
We've tried before. We just didn't get those awards, but we're super, super excited, isn't it, Councilwoman, that we got two awards. It actually kind of put us on the map.
Good. Congratulations. We actually have one person signed up to speak, William Frankenfeld.
Hello, my name is William Frankenfeld. I live in the 90807 zip code, but I care about this project and just all the ensuing development along this area because I attended Long Beach Poly. I love that the area is like finally redeveloping. We're seeing transit-oriented housing, which aligns with both our city and state goals. That's beautiful. That's great, you know. But I think the city needs to not put a halt on these projects, but find other ways to improve the neighborhood, because I've read the Midtown specific plan and the area, and it talks about how the area lacks park space and jobs and grocery stores and banks, and that is still the case. I know Fourteenth Street Park is seeing some improvements, but it is still a severely, severely park short, park space short neighborhood. Likewise, there are some banks, some grocery stores, but for the population, like, there should be way more. And my big concern is that there aren't a lot of local jobs in the area. Where I live, if you don't have a high school, if you dropped out of high school, if you don't have a college degree, there are plenty of places that you can work. You have shops, restaurants, bars that are willing and able to hire you. But this area just, there aren't that many jobs. And even with transit improvements to reach other jobs, I really think the city needs to find ways to bring more jobs and commercial space and park space into this area. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's a lot of jobs in the city of Long Beach. You can apply. We're hiring. All right. Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Item twenty-seven, please.
Item twenty-seven is a report from financial management, recommendation to adopt resolution to execute a contract with the Alpha and Omega Group Security Services for providing security guard services for a total annual contract amount not to exceed 2.1 million. Declare proposition L ordinance read the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the City Council for final reading, and execute documents necessary to amend contract with GSSI for providing security guard services for a revised contract amount not to exceed 9.3 million, C D Y.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Item twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight, a report from financial management, recommendation to execute all documents necessary to amend contracts with ABM Industry for providing custodial services to various locations for a revised contract amount not to exceed 13.3 million, C D Y.
Is there any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
Councilwoman Zendehas, motion is carried.
Thank you. Twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine is a report from police department, recommendation to execute all documents necessary to amend contract with the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority for providing law enforcement services for a revised contract amount not to exceed 59.6 million, District One, Two, Six, Seven, and Eight.
All right. What is this?
So, Mr. Mayor, this is, we talked about this as part of the FY25 budget. The Metro Authority is looking at creating their own policing force in the future. And so this is us extending our contract to work on the transition. We actually, we see this as a very positive thing. For a short time, we've been doing all the police security services on the A-line. It was the right thing to do. We stepped up. We moved into this position to do this. And at this point in time, we'll be transitioning this most likely to the sheriff, and then eventually to their new police force. And it actually gives us a benefit, too, of getting our officers, who are doing this, both officers and on overtime, back into helping fill some of the vacancies that we have in our own community that can be policing in our own community. So this is a partnership with Metro. We'd like that to be a smooth and seamless transition, so we're asking for some extra time to do those extensions as we transition services.
Okay. I'm plugged in. I'm aware, and I support the general direction. This is beginning that process. So it's not negotiated yet. You're figuring, this gives you the authority to do that, correct?
Correct. We're negotiating that as we speak and what that looks like and how we're going to exit out of here. We do have in the fiscal, in the report, kind of what that looks like in terms of dollars, and then we would true up our budget in the next budget cycle as all those come to fruition.
Understood. Vice Mayor Allen?
I support it. I have, I do have my concerns about how effective starting in your own police department for Metro is going to be, but nevertheless, that's out of our worries. But I support this. I support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Kerr?
Same. Support. It'll be interesting to see how it plays out for Metro.
And I'll just say, I think it's an opportunity for us. I mean, how many people are in that? How many officers do we have in that detail?
Commander Benson?
I caught me off guard on that one. So we have two sergeants in the detail, and I believe it's six officers that are assigned to the detail. So that would give us back two sergeants to potentially patrol or another detail that's missing, and then those officers for calls for service.
Right. I think that would help beef up other areas like patrol, neighborhood safety bike teams, other areas that we have the positions available, but we don't have the place for it to go, or to provide some of the service outside of the platform that has been an issue particularly downtown, or to do work in tandem with Metro, but not directly for Metro in terms of managing the quality of life challenges at the end of the line. So thank you so much. Members, please cast your vote. Councilman Austin, let me see your name. Go for it.
Before you vote, and I'm supportive of the direction, I just wanted to point out that, you know, this was a, began as a $30 million contract over five years. That's not a small number in terms of officers funded. It's not a handful. I want to be sure that we're going to be able to recoup those costs or re, maybe, Mr. City Manager, where are we going to get the money? Because when this was brought forth, our mayor, I believe, was on the Metro Board. This was touted as a victory, local control, bringing money back to the city to deal with some of our budget issues.
Right. Some of that has changed. So the context, and I'll let Tom chime in, too, but the context.
I'll talk to the, yeah.
I'm sorry. But anyway, some of that has changed. The context then was a very different sheriff and some real challenges. And now we're in a place where we have a different sheriff in the county, and that is helping inform that. Tom, you want to elaborate?
Absolutely. So at the time we were doing this, we were getting really very poor service from the sheriff. The sheriff wasn't investing. It was a different sheriff, not aligned kind of with the vision of policing that we would expect. And so the City of Los Angeles was experiencing the same thing. And so there was a bid for the sheriff to take a smaller part of the A-line. Long Beach would take its part, and City of L.A. would take its part. It's been a success. They funded a number of positions. At that time, we were pretty close to fully staffed. We had a much lower vacancy rate, and we were able to do this mostly through overtime and bring people onto that assignment. And so this has all been fully offset. They give us the budgeted office, or the budget for the positions, and then we either fill those with officers or we fill them with overtime. And so when this goes away, then the revenue goes away and the expense goes away, but we're going to still have the sheriff now providing that level of service in Long Beach. So they'll take over, so the service will still be there, and we think it'll be much better than when it was several years ago. And then this will, the actual amount is nine police officers, two sergeants, one lieutenant, two professional support staff members will be reassigned to other critical vacancies in our department. The one impact that it will have is we spread a little bit of cost overhead right now, about $250,000 that gets spread to this contract. We would have to absorb that. But in exchange, all of those people are back on the force. And right now, it's very different with almost 20% vacancy. The people are, that will fill those positions are incredibly valuable. So happy to have them back in our community.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I'm glad that those officers will be back in the community. Thank you.
Thanks. And I think when this is done and we get the details of the extension, we should come back and explain it to council a bit. Because I'll be honest, we've had a lot of conversation about that, but I didn't know that this was the item to begin that process. And we talked about it a little bit. I think it was in the major budget recommendations to explore some of this. And I would welcome that number of bodies back in because we do have the positions funded, but not the bodies slated into those positions. So this helps us with our staffing issues in our Long Beach Police Department in terms of vacancy. So it makes a big difference. That said, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
All right. Next is twenty-nine. Nope, next is thirty?
Item thirty, thirty is a report from Public Works, recommendation to execute MOU with Rancho Los Alamos Foundation and Rancho Los Cerritos Foundation to administer funding in an aggregated amount not to exceed 4.7 million for city administrative cost for the deferred maintenance and capital improvements projects, District Four and Five.
Okay, we're going to go to Councilmember Kerr for recusal.
Yes, I'm a board member of Rancho Los Cerritos, so out of an abundance of caution, I will recuse myself from this item.
Oh. Are you on the board, too, Councilmember Superna?
What?
No, I don't think you have to recuse yourself. Madam Attorney, does she need to recuse? Do they need to recuse themselves?
Why would you need to recuse, Councilmember?
Use your mic.
If I don't, I'm not a member of the board, but I have a lot of dealings with them, so I'm good with that. Okay, thank you.
I think that's expected as a council member. Councilman Austin, you good? All right, good. Okay, let's see. Do we have a motion in a second? Councilmember, you around anything? All right. Any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Thirty-one, please.
Thirty-one is communication from Councilman Austin, recommendation to enter into a no-cost contract with Clear Channel Outdoor to display a public service announcement regarding human trafficking and missing person Ruthie Smith for six weeks, with the option to extend the contract for an additional 12-week period at the discretion of the city manager.
Thank you. I support this effort. Is there any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your support of the item. This is Ruthie Smith. Her family's come to the City Council. She has been, they have been asking for a billboard. We finally were able to get Clear Channel to agree to do so at no cost. This is a good item that brings attention to a very sad issue happening in our cities. Thank you.
All right. Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
All right. We'll now go to general public comment number two.
We have Jesse Torres. Is Jesse Torres here? No public comment.
All right. We'll now go to general announcements and adjournment. All right, go ahead and queue up. I see no one. Vice Mayor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite everyone to our amazing Halloween Bixby Party on Sunday, October 27th, from 2:00 to 4:00. If you have any kids, bring them out there. We have so much fun. I just love this event, and I get the privilege of judging these kids. It's just, it's just a fantastic time. So please come out and see us. If you have any questions, my office is 570-2222. This is hosted by Alameda's Beach Bluff Park, Bluff Heights, and Rose Park Neighborhood Association. So a bunch of great neighborhood groups participating in this. And then I also would like to close. Um, and then, um, also would like to close this meeting in honor of, uh, one of our residents that passed, um, Marka Burns. She was the co-founder and president of Long Beach Creative Group. Um, Marka's artistic journey began at the Toronto Art Institute and led to her MFA from California State University Long Beach. She taught at Cal, California State University Long Beach for 32 years and supervised student teachers, shaping countless students and impacting the artistic community. She also co-founded the Long Beach Creative Group in 2015 with six other artists to create opportunities for local artists and to be able to showcase their work. Her vision has helped establish, established the Long Beach Creative Group and the Rod Bricks Gallery as a virtual hub for artistic expression. Marka's legacy is in education, creativity, and community continues to influence the Long Beach artistic landscape. A celebration of life will be held in early December, so more details to follow. Thank you.
Councilmember Kerr?
Yes, our sincere condolences to their family. Thank you for sharing that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Senator Gonzalez and Assemblymember Loenthal for securing funding for our ranchos, which was approved while I was out of the room, um, and their continued support. Uh, there are so many great things to do for families and littles this weekend. So this weekend, I invite you to the Historical Society of Long Beach's 28th Annual Historical Cemetery Tour, Saturday, the 26th from 8:30 to 3:00. You can explore the cemetery, the Sunnyside and Municipal Cemeteries, learn about local history through graveside performances of the lives of those at rest. Tickets and information can be found at HSLB.org. Uh, also on Saturday, the 26th, you can shop from creative vendors while enjoying local food and drink and other activities at the Long Beach Exchange during their Halloween-themed pop-up at the hangar from 12 to 4:00. Or you can visit Calite's Music to join their Howell O'Ween Festival Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00. Free, family-friendly activities and featuring local children's choir performances. Then on Sunday, the 27th, it is the annual Bixby Knowles Kidical Mass Zombie themed Bike Ride. Please be sure to wear your best zombie look or get there at 10:30 and you can be made up to look like a zombie, uh, and join the community as they take off from behind Pixie Toys at 11:00 AM. On Saturday, the 27th, you can join the next experience at Willow Springs Park, Words in the Park, this Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00. And lastly, I invite you to Rancho Los Cerritos free, free, family-friendly Dia de los Muertos Celebration in partnership with Puente Latino Association. The Historic Ranch will host a vibrant cultural celebration this Sunday from 2:00 to 7:00, complete with live music, arts and crafts, and traditional ofrendas. Hope to see you out in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick Sodi?
Uh, yes. Um, I would like to invite everybody out to our final Coffee with the Cop for 2024. Uh, it's gonna be held on Saturday, October 26th from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, um, at the Starbucks located at 6629 Downey Avenue. So that's at Downey and Artesia. Uh, additionally, I would love to invite everybody out to, uh, the College Square Neighborhood Association's, uh, next meeting. They'll meeting on Tuesday, October 29th from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. This event will be held virtually. Uh, and then lastly, uh, super excited to continue to announce, um, and invite everybody out to Beach Streets Uptown. Uh, this will be held on Saturday, November 9th from 11:00 to 4:00 PM. Um, this event will be in the Ninth District, um, along Atlantic between South and Artesia, um, and Artesia between Atlantic and Cherry. Um, it's gonna be a ton of fun. Uh, we're gonna be combining this with our Veterans Day Festival at Houghton Park as well as showcasing all of the fantastic work that is being done on, um, the Artesia Great Boulevard project. So pull out your bikes, your skates, whatever you want, um, as long as it doesn't have a motor, uh, and let's have some fun.
All right. Looking forward to that. Councilmembers and Dejas?
Thank you. Um, Wednesday, October 23rd, um, Downtown Long Beach Alliance Food Series Workshop will be taking place from 6:00 PM to 7:30 at the hub at 100 West Broadway. Also, this week, we will be hosting our District One check-in, happening on Thursday, October 24th from 6:30 to 7:30 PM at Partake Collective's 456 Elm Avenue. For more information, please contact my office. On Wednesday, October 23rd, oh, sorry, wrong one. Um, on Monday, um, October 28th, we will be having Trick for Treat Pup Parade on, next Monday from 1:00 to 5:00 at Lincoln Park on Pacific and Broadway. Please come join us. Also, um, please join us for this Saturday coming up, October 26th, um, or next Saturday coming up, October 26th from 8:30 AM to 10:30 for Alameda's Beach Cleanup at 219 Esperanza Avenue for District One Quarterly Cleanup. Join us for more information, please contact my office. And last, but definitely not least, please join us on November 2nd for our City of Long Beach Dia de los Muertos Parade being held on Pine, starting on Pine and Third at 11:30 A, at 11:00 AM on November 2nd. Hope to see everyone out in the community.
All right. Councilmember Supernova?
Uh, thank you. On Friday morning, our office will be sponsoring three tables at the Hope Latina Empowerment Day at the Hotel Maya. So I'd like to thank the city employees who will be joining our council staff and employees from Orange County Credit Union, La Corte Senior there. Thank you.
Right. Well, it looks like we're, uh, heading in the holiday season, cause the events are beginning to, um, to ramp up. So, uh, thanks to the council members. Thank you to everybody for participating. Uh, this council meeting's now adjourned. See you next week. Actually, we won't see you next week. Or the week after, because the council meeting is canceled for the election. So see you in three weeks.